Or even something like, even nice to Mike. We looked high and low.
You lost it again?
I don't, I'm pretty sure I lost it.
Meeting will please come to order. This is a regular meeting of the Board of Trustees of the Village of Womet. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, thank you for joining us tonight. As I said, this is a regular meeting of the Board of Trustees of the Village of Womet. We'll call the matters in the order in which they appear on the printed agenda, and there are copies of the agenda on the table by the door, so you may want to have one so you can follow along to see when your matter will be called. If you plan to address this tonight, we ask you, please come up to the podium, please speak into the microphone, tell us who you are and where you live, as that may be relevant to the matter at hand. We ask that you speak clearly into the microphone so we can hear you, and because everything you say and everything we say is being recorded. And from those recordings, minutes of the meeting are prepared. These minutes are available on our website and at Village Hall in hard copy form. Also, our village board meetings are televised on local access Channel 6 and on the Internet. If you look up, you can actually see the cameras, the little red dot indicates the active camera. By televising our meetings, we make it easy for our neighbors in the community to follow the proceedings of the village board, see the types of matters that come before us, the questions that we ask and the policies we create. You can find archived videos of village board and other local government meetings on our website. I'd like to personally thank all the residents of Womet who take the time to watch Channel 6 and follow the workings of their local government. Now, before each meeting, the board receives a packet of agenda materials, and these materials are also made available to everyone on our website on the Friday before our meeting, so that residents and other interested parties can review the very same materials that the board members receive. This week's packet contains 614 pages. We've had an opportunity to review the information in the agenda packet, so if you do plan to address this tonight, we ask that you tell us the most material, the most relevant, the most important stuff that you want us to focus on. Now, as a courtesy to those around you, please take this time to turn off your cellphones and other devices, and while we're turning off our phones, would the clerk please call the roll? Trustee Sullivan?
Here.
Trustee Kennedy?
Here.
Trustee Dodd?
Here.
Trustee Kersman?
Here.
Trustee Barrow?
Here.
Trustee Plunkett?
Here.
President Polinski?
Here.
Okay, we have a quorum. Next item on the agenda is Item 2, Public Comment. Now, since we started early tonight, I am going to defer public comment to the end of the meeting. So we'll move on to Item 3, which is the Consent Agenda. As described on the printed agenda, items that are routine business that are not normally debated by the village board are placed on the Consent Agenda. All items beginning with the number 3 are on the Consent Agenda, so tonight, starting on page 1 with Item 3.1, all of the items on page 2, all of the items on page 3, and about half the items on page 4, ending with Item 3.28. Items on the Consent Agenda are up for approval tonight, and if an item is not removed by a member of the audience and is not removed by one of the trustees, the item will be approved and will not be discussed. So I'll begin by asking, is there any member of the audience who would like to remove an item from the Consent Agenda? May I see a show of hands? Okay, seeing none, I'll ask the trustees, are there any items that anyone would like to remove from the Consent Agenda?
Yes.
Trustee Kennedy?
I would like to remove Item 3.8, please.
Item 3.8, which is Historic Preservation Commission Report, Case 2019 HPC 022, for 301 Sheridan Road. Okay, that item has been removed from the Consent Agenda. Are there any other items that anyone would like to remove from the Consent Agenda? Okay, hearing none, may I have a motion to adopt the Consent Agenda? So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second. Madam Clerk, please call. Madam Clerk, sorry, it's my old habits die hard. Would the clerk please call the roll of the motion to adopt the Consent Agenda? Trustee Sullivan?
Aye.
Trustee Kennedy?
Aye.
Trustee Dodd?
Aye.
Trustee Kersman?
Aye.
Trustee Barrow?
Aye.
Trustee Plunkett?
Aye.
President Polinski? Aye. Motion carries. Consent Agenda has been adopted. If you are here for an item on the Consent Agenda, it was just approved, and I'll clarify for people who are here tonight, again, all the items beginning with the number 3 have been approved, and that includes land use items 3.4, 3.5, 3.6, 3.7, 3.10, 3.11, 3.12, 3.13, and 3.14. So if you were here for one of those items, it's been approved, we know further discussion of those items or any of the other items on the Consent Agenda, so you are free to leave. Of course, more than welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting. Now, if you are leaving, it's still very early, and I always ask people to stop by one of our downtown restaurants before heading home, but we have something new on the table. There are coupons. In an effort to support the business community, it's actually Trustee Sullivan's idea suggested an initiative to encourage residents to dine after our board meetings. So there's a $5 off coupon, subject to terms and conditions, at any one of a handful of participating downtown restaurants. It's good for this evening only, and it's $5, and they're located on the table. So anyone who's taking off, actually, I'm going to read which restaurants are honoring these coupons. Torino, Valley Lodge, Nyx, Pescadero, and Napolita. So all five of those restaurants are honoring those coupons. My family asked if they could come tonight. I said that wouldn't be right. So, and by the way, for those of you who don't attend a lot of village board meetings, my gaffe there, calling the clerk, Madam Clerk, for the past, as long as I've been on the village board, Barb Hirsch, who would normally be sitting next to Mr. Stein, acted as the deputy clerk and the clerk of the meeting. She recently retired, so Mr. Frenzer, at least for now, is manning his role as clerk. He is actually the clerk of the village as well. Next item on the agenda is Item 4, Report of Officers. We'll start with our report from our village manager, Mr. Frenzer.
No report, Mr. President.
Next report is from our Corporation Counsel, Mr. Stein.
No report, Mr. Mayor.
Next item is Item 5, which is the Report of Liquor Control Commissioner. There's no report tonight, so move on to the Standing Committee reports. First up is Land Use Committee, Trustee Barrow. Which, does it matter which one we go, we take first?
Does not.
Okay. So at your discretion, Peter, whether you'd like to take the one that was pulled off at consent, or the one that wasn't on consent to start with?
We'll take the one that was pulled off.
Okay.
I move to remove Item 611 from the table.
Okay, so Item 611, there's a motion to remove it from the table? Is there a second?
Second.
All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Okay, so the item's been removed from the table.
Thank you. I move to approve Zoning Board of Appeals' Report, Case 2019 Z19, 624 Elmwood Avenue, regarding a request for 396.42 square foot total floor area variation with a 9.54-foot rear yard stair setback variation to permit the construction of an exterior stairway in accordance with the plans submitted.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second. This item comes to us with a negative recommendation from the Zoning Board of Appeals. It will need five votes tonight to overturn the recommendation of the Zoning Board. Mr. Adler, would you come up? Now, this, for those of you who aren't aware, this was a case that we discussed at our last meeting with our holiday break, summer holiday break, that's a month ago, but we did discuss this case, so if you could very briefly just remind us of the issues here, and I want to try and do this on a somewhat expedited basis, given that we've already gone through it once.
Sure. As you may recall, there was an addition that was built under the house at 624 Elmwood. It was a flat-roofed garage, which did not have what we would call easy access to the roof of the garage. The applicant has been accessing that through a window, but has been using it. They have come in and are asking for approval, and those are the variations, the floor area variation and the rear yard setback variation. The actual size of the landing for the staircase is under 30 square feet, so that 396 square foot amount does include...
The existing condition.
Right, the existing condition, where variations have already been granted. And then, the 9.54-foot rear yard setback is because the staircase is actually encroaching into the required rear yard, and because, as President Polinski mentioned, this did come with the negative recommendation, it does need five positive votes.
And are there any questions for Mr. Adler? One other point, there is sort of an odd shape to the lot, which is driving the rear yard setback.
There it is. The rear of the yard comes to a point, and so the setback from the garage to the rear yard setback is fairly close, but again, there's a, there's a, the usable rear yard in this case is triangular.
Right, right, okay. So questions for Mr. Adler?
I have a question. I didn't think it was the setback that was an issue. I thought the issue was square footage.
Two variations.
Or both of them.
Yeah, setback and, right.
Okay.
So the 30 extra feet, the 30 extra square feet, less than 30 extra square feet, and then the setback, and the variation ask is for, every time, it's the entire amount, it's not the incremental, so there's an existing condition plus less than 30.
Yeah, the, in this case, the addition of what's being requested, square footage-wise, is fairly small.
Right, right. Okay. Questions for Mr. Adler? All right, so, don't go far, John, but, so the applicant's addressed this at the last meeting, and I'm going to try to move this forward. Instead of asking them to come up, let's have some commentary from us, because that will probably guide their comments, to the extent they have any. So I'm going to sort of jump ahead, and again, this is because we did go through this and spent a good 30-plus minutes, I think it was closer to 45, in the last meeting. So at this point, I'm going to ask people where they stand, and again, it's optional, but if you don't sort of take a side, you're going to be the first to talk about what you're debating here. So if you're leaning in favor of granting this request, would you raise your hand, please? Okay, if you're against, leaning against the request, would you raise your hand? Okay, so let's start with any one of the folks that are against. What's your thinking? Trustee Sullivan, Trustee Kennedy, or Trustee Kersman?
I don't, well, first I want to say that it's admirable that the homeowners are considered good neighbors, and that the owners of the adjacent property support their variation request, but the neighbor's approval of a project alone is not an adequate basis, in my opinion, for granting a zoning ordinance variation. The village board, like everyone else, is bound by its own ordinances, and they set out specific criteria by which a variance is granted or denied. Among other things, there must be a "practical difficulty" or "particular hardship" which is peculiar to the property in question, is not generally shared by other properties used for the same purpose, and is something which would prevent the owner from making a reasonable use of his property. Eight years ago, the owner sought to build a garage, and the Zoning Board of Appeals agreed that the criteria were met, because the irregular shape of the lot made construction of a conforming structure impossible, and the irregularity, while maybe not unique, was unusual. The lack of a garage, particularly in our climate, prevented the homeowners from making reasonable use of their property, and I would agree with that assessment completely. The variation sought tonight, however, is different. The homeowner now seeks easy access to a rooftop that they would like to use the deck for entertaining and growing herbs, flowers, and vegetables. The difficulties they cite are the irregular shape of the lot and the deep shade in the backyard. I don't think the shape of the lot is particularly relevant, except for the setback, so I'll move on to the question of whether the shadiness of the yard is something that meets the criteria. First, I don't think the shadiness of a lot, particularly in Womet, is "peculiar to the property" or an attribute not generally shared by other homes in Womet. I think quite to the contrary. We have a lot of very heavily wooded lots in the village. It's not uncommon. Moreover, even if the shade in the backyard was highly unusual, the next question is whether the shadiness of the lot prevents, "prevents" the homeowners from making reasonable use of their property, end quote. I think the answer to this question is also no. The homeowners already have a 230-square-foot outdoor deck suitable for entertaining, and while the shadiness of the backyard may preclude them from planting a successful vegetable or herb garden, or growing the sort of flowers that they prefer, I don't think this means that they "can't" make a reasonable use of the property. Accordingly, while the variance seems innocuous and unobjectionable on its face, it simply doesn't meet the criteria of our ordinance, and I feel we need to abide by that criteria and enforce the ordinance.
So I'm going to disagree with you in that the hardship, the amount of hardship is relevant to the amount of the ask. So if you have a big ask, you need a big hardship.
Right.
And in this case, the question is...
I agree.
...whether the shape of the lot is enough hardship for the setback variation, and also sort of for a small, 30 feet, we're talking about, a small amount of floor area ratio. Now, we're very sensitive on floor area ratio, but the shape of the lot got them the big garage, which is the big part of the addition in the garage. So, like, the shape of the lot, in my mind, is usually number one on the hardship list. Like, if you have a goofy-shaped lot, it's almost impossible to get the setbacks and all the ratios to work right. So I'm just going to disagree with your last statement, which was, even though it seems like it's a little bit, it doesn't meet it, I would suggest that, in my opinion, and that's what hardship is, is what is the opinion of this board. I've asked Corporation Counsel a number of times, how do you define hardship? And hardship is how the village board defines it in every particular case. So in this case, I would say that there's enough hardship that you can make a small approval, so.
I understand what you're saying.
You don't have to agree with me.
No, I know that. And I think, though, that we know that whenever there's a variance sought, people cite prior decisions that are made by the board, so although it's not technically precedential, I think that we have sort of treated it that way. And I'm really concerned that a heavily shaded lot, which is, doesn't apply to the setback, but does apply...
I don't, I'm not taking that into account at all. That's, I agree with you. Shade is not, that's not a hardship in my mind.
And so if it's not a hardship with, then I don't know how you get the variation in square footage.
Well, again, the question is, is the shape of the lot enough for 30 feet? You know, so. Trustee Sullivan, and you're also in agreement with Trustee Kennedy?
And I actually think she, that was very well said, and agree with her comments, because I think she's right, especially on the hardship, and I would question, it's not a 30-foot ask, it's a 5% ask.
Well...
Because they've already gone over that. Had we seen this eight years ago when it first came in, because the porch was consideration, or there were stairs, and they said, "No, we don't need that." The hardship was, we want a garage, we want to take our cars off the street, which we fully supported, both Zoning Board and the village board. That was right at the time. Now, our garage allowances, or what was acceptable at that time, were smaller, and so we did increase now to 22 by 22. So maybe we would have granted a 22 by 22 garage today, I don't know, but I think had we been in there, we would have minimized it. And so now to come back and say, "Oh, it's just another 30 feet," we might have granted a 440-foot garage today, this is acceptable. I don't think that's consistent with our seven standards, in this case. I don't think the ask is, I think we could have minimized it, and that was always the goal, is to minimize the variations. I think we could have minimized it back then. It's now, it's a nice convenience, and I agree, it will look nice, it'll be more better access than crawling out of a window, but I also have a hard time looking at other people who we have denied for nice conveniences, even small, and said, "You can't have that." We've had people, we've made people remove things, we've denied them for small asks that would be very nice to have. So in this case, it's, my mind is not in the hardship. Sorry.
No, that's, we have seven of us. Trustee Dodd, I'm not going to just go all no's and then all yeses, we'll talk.
Well, I just kind of wanted to speak, since I wasn't here last time, and just wanted to be able to speak to the applicant for a moment, since the rest of you had that opportunity. First, thank you for coming back. I recognize I was the one who was not here last time, so appreciate your patience in this process. I can understand why the board's struggling with this, so I guess I just wanted to say that in terms of, and I agree with many of the perspectives that the trustees have said here. You know, I watched, just so that you know, I watched the video of the board meeting last time, so I'm very well aware of the conversations that went on behalf of all the trustees, as well as what you said, so I don't want you to feel you have to repeat that for me. I also met earlier yesterday with John Adler, to be sure I was caught up on this particular issue, and I guess, and I'm sure you know, I also came and visited your home on Sunday, so, which I had a lovely opportunity to meet you both, so. So I just want to make sure you know that I feel adequately prepared to have this discussion without being in front of you last time. You know, as I reflected on what the other trustees said last time, I can understand where Trustee Sullivan is coming from. I always wish that a resident or architect or whoever was as forthcoming as they could be when they're in front of us, in terms of what they're asking for, and so I think that's a struggle for us often, and so it's a struggle that we're here now, when maybe it feels like they weren't as forthcoming as we would have wished. That's water under the bridge now, but I can appreciate especially Trustee Sullivan, who was involved in this process, in terms of how he feels. I also want to say that I agree with something that Trustee Kersman said last time, which is, I do think past variances matter, because it's not very often that we would, and we alluded to this, but it's not very often that we would grant a floor area ratio variance and then grant a second one. And so that's kind of the situation we're in today. So I do agree with the comment Trustee Kersman made last time, which is, it is important to look at past variances that were approved, and not very often do we come and approve those, and that's very much the case, as President Polinski spoke to, about new construction and things like that. So I can understand the kind of the struggle that Trustee Sullivan mentioned today. That said, I do believe I will support this, and the reasons are a number. One is, I think, I believe that because it's now a flat roof, and they are using it, we do want people to be safe, and I think crawling out, and they're using it today, I saw it, I was there, I saw their furniture there, I think crawling out a window is, and to get access, is not necessarily safe, and depending on what's there, and if they're crawling out of a window, and a child's crawling out or whatever, and I do believe it's our responsibility to make sure that we look at that. I know that's not necessarily a reason for hardship, but, and I think it's something we should be looking at broader around. If we're going to allow people to have a flat roof, depending on the circumstances, it's likely they're going to access it, so either we need to have something that, if we think it's not safe, I know we require railings, but we just should be thinking about that, because I just think it's not safe to have people crawling out of a window. I happen to have a flat roof in my house, so, we don't use it, but I do happen to have one, so, we have a door access to it, actually. I did actually have an opportunity to meet your neighbor, which is the one most impacted, I believe, and her name was Julie. I met Julie, actually, the one that lives, so, and she was in favor of it, and so I do think that for, you know, situations like this, it's helpful to hear from the neighbors in terms of the impact. And, you know, the neighbor, the one that's at 6, I guess she's on the corner of Elmwood and 7th, I think that would be, you know, and she happens to have a deck that's also a little bit raised, so this particular deck doesn't look that much out of place than what they're doing, I just want to say, in terms of what I saw. And then I just agree with what President Polinski said, which is, the hardship here, I think, is the lot size, and it's, I hear and I agree with where you're coming from, Trustee Kennedy, and I appreciate that, and to be honest, I've baffled with this since I've watched the video, but it is a very awkward lot size, it is very small, they're going to use it no matter, I mean, the reality is, they're going to use it no matter what, and in my mind, this is a small ask, and the reason why they're using it is because they don't have a very large lot. It's very hard to be able to, it's just small, and especially because it's a pie shape. I agree with the concern around, you know, not being able to grow tomato plants and vegetable plants, because I can't grow them in my yard either, and I wish I could. And then just the last thing is, I think what Trustee Plunkett said is another important point, which is, if this were granted, if they were coming in front of us for a garage today, it's possible, we don't know, but it is possible that we would have granted this, which would be a larger structure on that property, and regardless, this is not, doesn't have any impervious surface impact to us, which is something we're always interested in, and so for those reasons, I will support this. And I'm sorry if that was a little long.
No, it's good, you've got all your time from the last meeting, that was okay, that was good. Who'd like to speak on this side? Trustee Barrow?
I will. I appreciate the opportunity to revisit this, because I think it's given all of us a chance to perhaps examine the property again, and certainly review the minutes from our last meeting, and review the minutes from the Zoning Board. And when I think about the comments from the last meeting, and the comments also tonight, and I do take them to heart, I would say two things. First, this isn't a case about shade. The Zoning Board, in their report, mentions, just in one time, in one place, foliage. But I stood in that yard today in bright sunshine. So it's not a case, I believe, of an applicant requesting a variation because their yard is too shady. So I don't think that shade is a factor here, and I don't think shade should be a factor in a variation request. The second thing I would add on my mind, and it really ties back to what Trustee Kersman spoke to, is the idea of sort of serial variations, and it would certainly concern me if an applicant came before us and received a variation, and shortly thereafter, came back and said, "Oh, I want a little more." But in this case, we have a break of eight years. For eight years, I presume, this property has been used in this or similar fashion. So, yes, I understand, we don't want creeping variations for the same property, but in this case, I believe the applicant deserves to have this case decided based upon the record that's before us, based upon the Zoning Board's report, based upon our discussions and any input from the public, not from what may have been said, or not said, or thought, or not thought, at a Zoning Board meeting eight years ago. But to my mind, this is a case of an unusual-shaped lot, a lot that is open but really isn't all that usable for the kinds of use that I think we all put our homes to, and it's a more natural usage, I think, to make use of the garage. The ask in this case regarding the floor area ratio is small, and if you all recall, or if you've seen the property, right underneath the staircase will be the two current existing large air conditioning units that are already there. So in terms of addition to floor area ratio, I don't think we're really doing that much, and certainly we're not doing much to, if anything, to the impervious surface. So I think that to make the best use of this property, to make a fair use, to make a use that's actually consistent with what one of the neighbors are doing, one of the neighbors that wrote in in support, who themselves are using their roof for a garage, to allow access to it in a convenient and safe manner is a very logical thing. For a staircase that will be immediately adjacent to their garage, not visible from the street, and I think it's a small ask, I appreciate that every zoning case needs to be understood in the context of the particular property and location of that property. But in my short tenure on the board, when I think of variations that we've approved, I think we've approved variations of significantly greater import than this one. So I supported this last month, and I'll continue to do so. Thank you.
Trustee Kersman?
Yeah, thank you. I'm drawing on some wisdom from trustees Kennedy and Sullivan. In the case of Trustee Kennedy, I don't know if you said it exactly this way, but it's not the strength of my objection, it's really a reaction to the strength of the argument, and, you know, I haven't necessarily been informed of anything new since our last meeting, when I held the position that I did. That would have been an opportunity to educate me further on it. But that being the case, I continue to think that it's not a given that a garage, a larger garage, would have been permitted or not, and I also feel strongly, deep respect for the years of service of Trustee Sullivan on the Zoning Board, and the context that he brought to the meeting, I found very compelling, and I do think that, you know, in combination with, you know, my own, you know, inclinations towards being concerned about variances, begetting variances, you know, again, not the strength about the size or the scope of the variance, but I just wasn't compelled to support it.
Trustee Plunkett?
Well, obviously, I supported this a month ago, but I think, just to clarify the facts as I understand them, this is a house built in, I believe, 1921, on a lot that had no garage. The homeowners wanted a garage, understandably, they lived near a very busy road, and the original location for their garage was objected to by neighbors, so they made a compromise in moving the garage. a compromise in moving the garage to where it is currently, which probably would affect the setback. The roof deck is permitted. We permitted that, we understood that at the time. And I think that, you know, I think the general population would think it is a little foolish for a board to grant a roof deck and not access to the deck. I mean, I think going out on a, through a bedroom window, I haven't done that since college. And I, you know, reiterate trustee Dodd's statement that, that in fact, may not be the safest way. And I, I think that if we are going to permit a roof deck, then we need to permit access to that roof deck. And I don't think the access here, I think it's minimal. I think it makes sense, and I would have granted this years ago, and I would grant this now.
So I'm going to make one last comment, and then I'll ask the applicant to come back up. But I think, you know, take a step back on everything here. We're talking about 30 feet. You know, the setback is very easy to get to because of the angle. You could have issue with 30 feet. But we're talking about 30 feet. We're not talking about 300 feet, we're talking about 30 feet. And so if we're really going to be, if this board is really going to take a stance that floor area, floor area ratio variations of 30 feet fall into the category of extreme hardship required, we're never going to approve any more zoning cases here. So I'm very sensitive floor area ratio. It's my most sensitive ratio because if you have a small lot, you have a small house. If you have a big lot, you can have a big house. But you can't have a small lot and a big house. That's not the way it works. But in this case, it's 30 feet. All right. So I will ask the applicant to approach. Now you've heard the discussion, so you can, you can address the points.
And I will cut down everything I was going to say and address people, I think specifically.
As you feel appropriate.
So trustee Kennedy, I just want to crystallize what our hardship was, because I think somehow you began to misunderstand what we were talking about. We talked about the truncated lot being our hardship. We have power lines that run along the back of the lot. We do not have an alley. Hence, the foliage has really grown over, which just makes it feel even smaller than it is. I did mention that I couldn't grow things, but the hardship was not a lack of sunshine. The hardship was the shape of the lot and the fact that we just really don't have a way to use it properly. Trustee Sullivan, exactly what you say is exactly why I came here with a tremendous amount of hope. I looked at the comps that you all provided me, and I was so excited to see that people right around me got 10% over their coverage and 12% over their coverage. One of them even got 20% over the coverage. And I thought, I'm asking for a little more than four. And so I thought, this is wonderful. If you're really comparing it, then you will be able to vote our way, because this is a really, really small ask. And even in the zoning board, when there weren't enough people, three people voted for us and two people voted against. So we got the majority, but we didn't get the super majority we needed because there weren't enough people there at the time. And the members last time really agreed that the standards of hardship were met. And there are other people, we've been to this meeting now twice, we went to the zoning meeting twice, because each time there weren't enough people there. And one of the things I noticed is that people come, and when they have a small ask like we do, it's 26 square feet, it's not even 30, they build it and then they ask forgiveness as opposed to asking permission. And what, over and over again, I heard the zoning board say, and what I've heard you all say, even in the last meeting when I was here, is, well, it's really small and it's already done, so okay. And I am standing here because I followed your process. I paid hundreds of dollars for the survey, I paid hundreds of dollars for the application, and I did exactly what you want the people in this village to do. And I walk around often and I see people who have done construction in this village with no permit on their window. You know what happens. We all know it happens. And you let it go. And I don't think that's the message that you want to send, that we have to hide from you. Because I'm here, doing exactly what you want me to do, and far less than the comps that you provided to me in terms of overstepping our variance and our floor aspect ratio, is that?
Floor area ratio, yes.
Area ratio. Sorry, this is not my area of expertise. And the other thing I would talk about is safety. Not only is it climbing out the window, but it would provide a fire escape for my daughter who has access right there. She would be able to safely exit our home, which I think is wonderful. We had one extra neighbor that didn't have a letter. She actually came with us here today. That's why I was pointing to her. You met our other neighbor Julie, but Amy is here with us today. Because all of the neighbors believe that we should be able to access our property. And one of the things trustee Dodd, that you saw in that higher deck that our new neighbors have, the Wallaces', is the deck that we have currently almost smacks up against theirs. So we're providing them more privacy by having an area where we're sort of removed from there. And I know, trustee Kennedy, you say that whether the neighbors approve is not paramount to your decisions. But I also looked at some of the comps and saw that there were objections from neighbors, and yet unanimously, this board voted in favor of the variance. And I don't know why, I don't know what the conditions were, but it was surprising to me because I know that part of what you do is try to protect us all as residents of Wellmet. And everyone around me is saying, this is great, do this. And the other people, trustee Sullivan, you have granted so much more to, than ours. And it really is just a small ask. So I beg you to change your mind.
Questions for the applicant?
I have a question, President Polanski. It's, it's not really 4% or 5%. When we talk about the variation from the floor area ratio, we have to consider the garage as well, right?
And that is 4%.
Mr. Adler, you can address this, but it includes all.
It includes all.
It's, it's the house, it's the garage, it's, and that's why, while the increase is only 30 feet, it's shown as more because you approve the variation cumulatively, if you will.
Correct. So, so John, do you know what the cumulative variation is if you count the garage and the stairs?
That's what the 364 is.
That's 4.6.
That's the 4%.
That's the 4%.
Yeah. Yeah. The incremental is the 30 feet. The total is what's shown in the variation.
Right. It's less than 400 and it's 26 feet for the, it's about the size of this podium, is what we're asking for. Seriously, for people at home who are watching.
I appreciate, I appreciate the comments. And yes, you're right, I've approved more on a percentage basis, and we can go through each case because they're not all comparable. Some cases, some of those homes that I did approve that I looked at were on corner lots, so they were already over. So what I hear the board saying, though, is that maybe our zoning code's not written right, and we should allow more space. Because I think, you know, that's what's, I'm hearing is acceptable, and maybe we should look to add more density and bulk if it's okay and incremental. I don't necessarily agree with that, but that's why.
I don't think, I don't think that's what I said, at least. I don't think that's what anybody said.
We're not really adding much bulk when you think about it.
You're not.
We're already out there with our, with our air conditioning units. We're asking for stairs over the air conditioning.
The air conditioning units aren't part of the FAR.
No, they aren't.
Okay, so that's not, that's not part of the couple.
There's no more bulk to the home. I mean, that's already out there with built-out structure.
I just, in some ways, I can, eight years ago, you came in, we approved it. I know you made.
I wish you would really think about the here and now, because I think that you are somehow upset about that.
I'm not upset at all.
Whatever happened back then. And I am too, because frankly, I was lied to by my contractor. So I'm pretty upset about it as well. But I wish that we would just think about it in the here and now. We're asking for 26 square feet to build a staircase to access something that we are using unsafely already. So we're talking about safety, we're talking about putting planters up there that would absorb water, by the way, that we have problems even in, between my neighbor's house and mine, where water builds up there. This is going to absorb some of that, and that's a positive in our neighborhood. Building more flowers and vegetables is a great thing. Last meeting, I was here, all the people were here complaining that we're tearing down trees, we're knocking down trees. And I want to build more environmentally friendly things up there.
I have no problem with the roof deck. I think that's great, and I wouldn't have had a problem eight years ago because I think I did ask it. And you did make an accommodation by moving the garage. It was probably in a better location for you, it wasn't for the neighbors at the time, so you angled it. We asked specifically about the roof. No, we're not using the roof deck. And you were the applicant.
I wasn't here. You know I wasn't here. I was.
Did you live in the house?
I did not live in the house.
Or did you own the property?
I had my children living in a hotel.
Okay.
That's where I was.
You owned the property.
And so I was pretty stressed out, and I did not look at all the details of it.
I know. But just like, just like you just said, we know.
It was approved.
And by the way, I do take offense to you saying, I know about construction projects that go, are done and are not permitted, and I do nothing about it. That I don't do. That I do call Mr. Adler and say, is this allowed? So I don't know about the other six members of the board, but that is not something, that is not fair. And I would, that was a, that was a sort of an accusation.
No, it wasn't. I'm just saying that all of us know that people don't follow the rules. That's what I'm saying. I'm not saying you approve those things.
It gets happened, but if we know it.
Hang on, hang on, hang on, hang on.
But if.
That's not, I do not say that you approve those things and that you turn the other cheek to those things.
You did say that.
What I'm saying, no, what I'm saying is that people do it without following the rules.
But you said, you know it, and we know it. We know it's happened.
You know people.
I don't know it's happened. I know it after the fact.
We know that people don't follow the rules.
Right.
That's what I'm saying.
It's not that we allow it or that we condone it or permit it.
No, I didn't in any way intend to say that you allowed it. What I'm saying is that it happens. We know people don't follow the rules.
And people get called on it. And we do, we do address it when we find out about it. I'm sure there's some that we don't find out about it. So is it cheating if they don't get caught? I don't know.
It is.
So.
And they get fined, just so that you know. They get fined a significant amount if they get caught. And we do have somebody who goes out and checks it. So, I mean, I understand trustee Sullivan's perspective here. We all are very sensitive to that and very sensitive. And I would say this because we're on TV. I mean, it's not acceptable for people to do work in the village without a permit, and we do our very best to find that.
But my point is, that's why I was here, because I wasn't going to break the rules.
You're doing the right thing. That I, and I think you've got the votes. So I think, you know, I think we've made the case, or.
She was five.
She's five votes.
No, I'm five.
We would, we would, this would have. This would have wrapped up a while ago if she had the votes.
If I had the votes.
Yeah, sorry. So I get, I get what you're asking. I just, going back to the last eight years, saying it's the contractor's fault, we can't tell that. But I've done, I've done construction projects on my house, and if they make a mistake.
Let's look forward and let's look at here and now and today.
Even if the statement was made at the zoning board eight years ago, that we're not planning to use the roof, that was eight years ago, and now they're asking for 30 feet. I mean, that's, it was eight years ago. And Peter said it best. This isn't like, I changed my mind yesterday, you know, and I, I got my approval and I came back. It's 30 feet. I mean, I.
So can I make a suggestion to see if, and I, I'm looking to President Polanski to see. So it doesn't appear that they're going to have the votes tonight. And so I'm just wondering, in fairness to them, it's also unfortunate that they went in front of the zoning board that didn't have a full board. Because if they had one more person there, it is possible that it actually would have gotten approved. And so I'm just wondering if you would, if they, we would consider allowing the applicant to go back to the zoning board? Because I don't think we want to vote on it tonight.
I think there's a statutory issue with going with the same.
Yeah. So it wouldn't be appropriate to send it back to the zoning board for the same exact application unless there's going to be, the direction is to modify or revisit it for whatever reason.
Mr. Adler, you've got a look on your face. Why don't you come up?
Yeah, I talked to, I talked to Mr. Adler about this, actually, when I met with him and asked him if this was possible.
In this situation, what, what, it sounds like, and I could be wrong, what you're asking for is to have that, that other person weigh in on it after the fact.
But we're, but the zoning board's turned over.
Yeah.
And we're still like one right now. But, but frankly, the two people who are against it are off the zoning board right now.
That's why I'm.
Their terms have expired.
Well, I mean, not to.
I can step aside, too, if it makes it easier, and you can point a new trustee.
It's a forum shop. I guess a couple of things.
That's not the right statement either. I agree.
We received new letters from the neighbors indicating that they don't object. I believe Chairman Duffy talked about if he lived in the house where I believe the Wallaces' live now at 6:30, that he might have a concern. So arguably, there's new information that might sway somebody's vote at the zoning board of appeals.
Again, if there's new information or there's a change in the, in the plan, then it's acceptable. If it's simply just to forum shop, then it's not.
No, right, right. No, and that, that's, you know, from a, from a, if, if there wasn't something that was submitted to the, the village board, which is the, I believe these came to the village board and not to the, the zoning board, the letters of support from 11/11/630 and 11/41, that maybe that's enough of a reason to, to send it back. The other option, which we wouldn't necessarily recommend, is the applicant withdraw their request and have to resubmit the request. Once the request is voted on, that's when the applicant has to wait a year to resubmit. If you vote on it tonight and it's denied, they could come back in a year. They could look at who's still on the zoning board, if the three members who voted for them is, are on the zoning board. If they see that the village board has a like makeup, they might choose to come back in a year. Those are, I believe, the options that we have before us tonight.
So let me, let me just reiterate. The applicant can withdraw the application and reapply to the zoning board.
Because we have.
Because we have not turned it down until we vote. If they withdraw, if they withdraw right now, right here, then we're not going to vote on anything. The alternative is, we could remand it to the zoning board, which we would vote to do, although that's a majority vote, and there are four votes right now. But in either way, assuming that neither trustee Sullivan, trustee Kennedy, nor trustee Kersman has changed their mind, what could likely happen, and my question to this board is, do we want to do this? What could likely happen is this could go back to the zoning board. Again, the, the two no votes just happen to be the two individuals who have just left the zoning board because they've served their 10 years, and I thank them for their service. But in any event, they had three votes, they've got three new people, they need one vote, they get approval from the zoning board, then it comes to us on consent and it gets approved. That's a very likely outcome of sending it back to the zoning board. And my question for the three trustees who are against it, if you want to, if you want to do that, we can do that. But we're going to get to, we're probably going to get to the same spot, we're just going to ask the resident to do a lot more work to do it.
Can I just say something here? I don't know that this is rightly our decision to make. The applicant has new information. If the applicant would like to go to the zoning board, that is completely up to the applicant.
That's correct.
And that should not be our decision to make. I don't know that that's fair to the trustees that are for this and the trustees that are against this. I think that the applicant does have new letters of support and the applicant has new information, and I think it's the applicant's choice to go to the zoning board if, if they desire. I mean, are you suggesting that we remand this to the zoning board?
Well, no, 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 that's, if they, these guys are whispering behind my back.
I'm sorry.
So the one, the one thing that, that we have no choice over is if the applicant withdraws.
If they withdraw, it's withdrawn.
We can't force them, obviously, to apply. But if we were to remand, it requires a motion and a second and a vote. And it'll be a majority vote to remand back. And you're remanding back with specific direction.
Which is to take into consideration the new information that's been provided to the board.
Sorry, that's what happens when you're surrounded by lawyers.
Yeah, I got it. Lawyer on my left, lawyer on my right.
President Polanski, can we, can we do a little raise of hands yet again to confirm that nobody's thinking has changed?
That, that was my point, that we may end up in exactly the same spot, just with a lot more effort on the, on the resident's part. And obviously, if we do take a vote, I would expect that if people say, I'm going to, I've changed my mind, that they, that they stand by that. But that would be a risk, arguably, if someone says, I'm okay, and then says no. And then you've started a year clock on them. But that's really, that's my question. Do we want to do that? Do we want to do that? And I, I understand, there are seven of us. We have different opinions and that's fine. And it's appropriate. We make better decisions as a group. We're split on this one. So I would ask the three trustees, and it's, it's completely fine if we say, no, I want to stand by my, my statements and my principle. Or if one of you is willing to vote yes, approve this, realizing that that's where it's going to end up anyways at the end of the day. So, and I have no problem if, if you're not interested in doing that. I'm just trying to find a path for the resident that I think might be a little bit less onerous. Because, you know, there's been a zoning board meeting, there's been a village board meeting, there's another village board meeting. There'll be a zoning board meeting and another village board meeting. Now, it'll be on consent if they get a favorable point of view. Does everybody understand what I'm saying?
Not exactly. So, what I, what I thought I heard you say is that if it goes back to the zoning board of appeals, it will be approved?
Well, so here's, here's my rationale for that.
Yeah.
There were five members at that meeting. Three voted yes and two voted no. The two that voted no are no longer on the zoning board. Their terms have expired. So there are three new members of the zoning board and they would need just one of those three members to agree with the other three and then it would be approved.
I, I understand that, but I don't think this board should be making predictions about how others vote. I, I just think it's inappropriate and puts a certain, possibly inappropriate pressure on them.
And that, well, there's no pressure on them. They could not vote that way. I'm not suggesting anybody should vote that way.
Okay.
So what we're suggesting is that if they take into account the new information, which is favorable comments from the neighbors, it might happen.
Might.
It might. So.
Is your architect here? Who designed the staircase? Because what I'm asking, what I want to know, is this really the only option? Is there other options or who designed this?
Well, we had a contractor come out and look at it and they told us that that was the best and safest option, just in terms of the way that it, the current deck that we have, we can't access up. Do you have the picture?
We can't come in through the garage at all.
No, there's no way.
I'm just curious if there's, we've explored every other option going in from the house or anything else.
There's no, our garage is, there's no way to go put a staircase in there and we could.
Could you put a spiral staircase in the garage? Because it would be in the corner to get up there.
There wouldn't be enough room for the car then. The car is butted up against the edge of the.
We thought about putting a spiral staircase up our deck.
No, we did too. And there, and that really wasn't an option. The contractor said that this would be, and we don't have enough surface area on the existing deck to, in essence, take that deck and make a staircase without going out over the, the lawn area.
I spoke to trustee, trustee Sullivan, I did speak to John Adler about this briefly just to ask, because if you, if there was a way to remove the platform, right, that, then you would not need as much of a variance. If the stairs could just go right up to the porch, but that would mean that it would have to come out in the yard.
So the stairs would have to be at a greater angle?
Correct.
You wouldn't need.
You wouldn't need any variances.
You would still need a setback, right?
Probably not, because you'd probably move it over closer to the house.
But then, they would then project into the yard rather than being.
Yes, they would project in the yard.
No, that, right. That's not a better solution necessarily. Unless you put it on the other side.
Right, I'm not saying, right.
So there was another option we explored, and if you, if you look here, this is our deck, we, and I don't have a picture, someone suggested we run the stairs up that way or we do a spiral right here. Or we run the stairs this way toward our outer deck. The problem with all of those options is if you can see, this is the window that we crawl out. That's on an upper roof there. So see, it's got a gutter around it. Now, all of those options would mean we would climb an extra five and a half feet, the distance here. We'd have to crawl, we'd have to get up to that access, come across that deck and then back down to the, what's the existing load-bearing deck. So those were thrown out as just non-workable, because the ones that extend out on the deck took up, the deck was only seven feet wide. You can't see it there, but a four-foot staircase would, would mean four feet of those all the way out to the middle of the deck would be stairs going up that way. It would be very steep and very high, as opposed to this one that is more gradual. And these are, these are the actual, were they seven and three quarters by 10 or something like that? And it hit the exact same, the perfect spot there, as it turns out, from what we, our designer proposed.
So if we tried to do the stairs just above where the air condition is, eliminating the need for the variance, the stairs would be incredibly steep and would be unsafe.
Those were the other options that we looked at. Okay, so I think at this point, people have their minds made up. I will take trustee Barrow's suggestion and once again straw poll the board to see where people stand. You will see where people stand and you can react as appropriate. I think you, have you understood the way, all the rationale I've been following?
I did, yes, I understood. And I'm hoping maybe I changed somebody's mind, but if not, then.
You'll find out in a minute.
May I then come up and request what to do?
Yeah, we're not going to vote. We're not going to vote yet. So straw poll, who still leans in favor? Who still leans opposed? Okay. All right, so now you can approach.
Well, I would respectfully request that you maybe push it back to the zoning board if you could, because if we have.
Better for them to withdraw, is it better for us to remand?
In my professional opinion, it would be better for you to withdraw and reapply. Okay? Because then the zoning board would be able to start somewhat fresh. Now, if we remand it back, we have to give them instruction to look at specific new materials. I don't know.
But the new materials are in our favor.
Sure, and you can submit those at the same time.
But that's all they can review too.
That's all that basically we'll be reviewing. They're not going to be reviewing any other aspect of it.
So we wouldn't be able to present then, is what you're saying, the way we did in the original zoning meeting?
Well, you would still have a public hearing, right? It would, it would still be on this particular matter. I am sure that they will let you present on anything, but if we remanded back with direction, they're kind of stuck with what that direction is. And if the direction is to look at the new materials, then they're stuck looking at the new materials. And I don't know if you have anything else that you would want to switch in, in that time. So ultimately, it's up to you.
I, I think what Mr. Stein is saying is, if we remand, there's restrictions and limitations. If you withdraw, then you have the flexibility and the option to do whatever you want.
And we have to get a new survey and pay for a new variation application?
Oh, I don't.
It's the timeframe, isn't it? If we withdraw, don't we have to wait a year?
No.
No, no, no.
If we vote no, you have to wait a year.
Right, that's why the withdrawal allows you to do, to do, you would need a new application. It's an application fee, but I don't believe you would need a new survey or anything other materials. You could probably use the existing materials, unless of course, you're going to change some things.
We have no desire to change it.
I would just remand and go with the new information, I would think.
The board's willing to do that.
I think the new information is, is the positive. The one thing, and it, it sort of upset me at the time, because they were insinuating that I was not truthful about the fact that my neighbors agreed. I neglected to bring letters in to the zoning board. And Mr. Duffy kept saying, I, you know, if that were me, I wouldn't be happy with this. And I'm not sure I believe that the neighbors are happy with this. And so we didn't have letters. Now we do have the letters. And so it's sort of, I think, very clear how people feel about it. The whole reason we changed everything before was to be kind to our neighbors. And I thought that that was the, the biggest thing that we really wanted to do. And, and so in this instance now, all of our neighbors are saying yes. And so I'm, I'm very obfuscated as to why I still have a couple of no's, because the neighbors are all on board. The whole reason we, we altered this plan earlier was because we were trying to be good neighbors. And now that's, you know, not even a factor.
Well, I, I'm not implying that you're, you're not being a good neighbor by any means. It's obvious from the letters that, that you are. It's just that the neighbors don't get to determine whether there's a variance.
I understand. They got to determine that I had to change it and, you know, redo the entire plan, but.
It's a factor.
It's a factor.
It is a factor. Okay. So you're not going to withdraw. And in that case, I would entertain a motion to remand this back to the zoning board with the instructions that they take into account the new information that's been provided since the last zoning board meeting.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Would the clerk please call the roll on the motion to remand to the zoning board?
Trustee Sullivan?
No.
Trustee Kennedy?
No.
Trustee Dodd?
Yes.
Trustee Kersman?
No.
Trustee Barrow?
Yes.
Trustee Plunkett?
Yes.
President Polinski?
Aye. So the motion carries, the case is remanded to the zoning board. Okay, back to trustee Barrow. We've got 3/8 that trustee Kennedy removed from consent.
Oh, yes. Thank you. I move that we approve the Historic Preservation Commission report, case number 2019, HPC dash oh-two-point-two regarding 301 Sheridan Road, regarding a request for a certificate of appropriateness for revisions to a previously approved plans for an attached garage addition.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Trustee Kennedy, you asked for this to be removed from consent, so I will give you the floor.
Okay, thank you. I ask that it be pulled out the consent agenda primarily because of the letter that Ms. Hussy-Arnston wrote on behalf of the Willmet Historical Museum, expressing her concern about the case. And I know she's here tonight, so I'm hoping that she is willing to come and address the board and tell us what she thinks.
Maybe, I'm thinking Mr. Adler could just explain.
I think you're absolutely right.
The case first.
Exactly. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Plunkett. Took a look at my agenda. Took my eye off the ball.
Completely different.
Completely different. Okay, put together something similar that we do at the zoning board when you get a case that's off the consent agenda. First, to explain what the request is. There are standards. To show you what those standards are, and then to quickly go through the, in this case, it's elevations, because these are unlike for a variation where you've got bulk and setbacks. This is really design. So the petitioner's requesting a certificate of appropriateness for revisions to previously approved plans that were permitted in 2017. I'll go over the, the modifications that were done without a new certificate of appropriateness and without updating their building permit. They did get a building permit for the main portion of the work, which was the, the attached garage and the deck. And they did get approval from the HPC and this board to do those additions. Again, we're talking about design changes that were done. The first one is roof materials, and this is the one that Kathy was talking about. They installed a standing seam metal roof on the, the existing front porch roof of the home. And then they built the new side porch, which showed also asphalt shingles and installed a standing seam metal roof there. They did changes to windows and door openings. Probably the two most significant were, they had two round openings in the rear, and I'll show you that when we go to the plans. One had a window, one was closed up. They were going to make both of them into the window, into windows. They, they closed both of those up. There were two round windows on the east and west elevations of the garage that mimic the round windows I was just talking about, and they changed those to square windows. There was a carriage-style door that was eliminated from the east elevation. That's the elevation that faces Sheridan Road. And a service door was put in its place. Windows were eliminated on the north elevation of the garage. That's an elevation that faces the, the side lot line and the neighbor. And then there were skylights added to the north elevation of the garage. The last change that was done to the approved plans is they installed square porch columns instead of, on the, the new side porch in the place of round columns. And then there's varying widths of those columns. If the request is approved, the applicant will have the revised set of plans approved and the modifications will be permitted to remain. If the request is denied or a portion of the request is denied, the applicant will have to amend that portion of, change that portion of the construction. When the Historic Preservation Commission and you are looking at requests for changes to local landmarks, we look at the Secretary of the Interior Standards for Rehabilitation. This is included in your packet, is 2.5. Not going to go through all these, as, but I could bring this back up if you would like me to. This shows the approved plans on the east elevation. The highlighted areas show the changes that were going to be visible, that the applicant was proposing to the local landmark. This shows, in the blue, it shows the opening change. Sorry, the, you could see the garage, the carriage garage door was changed and a service door was put on. The round window above that, you can't see it that well in this, on the PowerPoint, but that's changed to square. The other two changes you see from this elevation is the installation of the standing seam roof instead of shingles, and that's outlined in purple. That's in the front porch there and the side porch. And then this is the south elevation. Again, the dotted line shows the addition that was permitted in 2017. This shows, highlights the standing seam roof and the square columns on that elevation. The columns are highlighted in yellow. This is the rear elevation. Oh, sorry, that's the, oh, sorry. Okay, this is the, this is the rear elevation as approved. You see the porch and the garage. Very lightly, you could see the circular windows on the second floor. The one which is to the right is the one that was the window. The other one was, as I understand it, closed up. This is what was installed. Both of them are closed up. The square, the round window over the garage door was made square. And then the standing seam and the square columns were the other changes on that elevation. Probably the, definitely the most minor elevation change, or the, the elevation that faces the neighbor, so arguably the least important elevation, at least historically, would be the north elevation, shows two windows. What was installed were three skylights instead of the two windows. And then we just have a historic photo from 1905, from the rear of the structure, and then from, this is just pre-addition, which shows the rear and side of the structure. So.
Mr. Adler, could you just explain the process for historic landmarks and what a certificate of appropriateness involves?
Sorry, what was the first? Oh, the process?
Yeah, for the, for the historic landmark and then the certificate of appropriateness, how this differs from maybe just getting a permit?
Right. In, in Willmet, to become a historic landmark, typically the, the property owner has to petition the village and, and show that it meets certain criteria. It could be somebody famous lived there. It could be the, the style, the type of architecture. I believe in, and, and I could be corrected on this, but I believe both the occupants of the structure and, you know, the, the quality of the structure and the architecture are reasons why this was made a landmark. So previous owner, I believe their name was Cameron, they petitioned the village to make this a local landmark. They did not want to see this structure, most importantly, demolished or changed in any significant way that would lessen its historic importance. Once you are a local landmark, and again, it's voluntary on the part of the homeowner, there's certain standards you have to meet when you're going to do additions. In this case, the applicant did get permission to do, again, the approved plans that we show here from the HPC and ultimately the village board. And that was in 2017. So that process was followed. The change, there were changes done without coming back to staff, and those are the ones we're here to discuss. Like the, the zoning board in the previous case, you've got, two of the, two of the modifications came with split votes. And then that was the roof, came with one negative vote. The window openings, I think, was unanimous by the HPC. And then the columns were, there were two negative votes. If you read the report, the staff did feel fairly strongly about recommending that the windows, at least especially the windows on the existing house, the round window, be left a operable window or a glass window instead of being covered up. But again, the HPC ultimately, on that particular change, recommended unanimously to grant it.
Questions for Mr. Adler?
Mr. Adler, how did the, the variations come to the attention of the village?
When staff went out to take a look to see the, and it was, I believe it was first the, the standing seam roof, when we saw that, we're like, okay, something's up, we've got to go, you know, the construction's nearing end, we, we better go make sure that this is being constructed in conformance with the plan. This is the first time, at least to my knowledge, that we had a local landmark change the design, you know, of the plans that were submitted and approved, first, you know, through the approval process to the village board, and then the permit process with staff, because, you know, if these came to us, if they came and said, we want to make these changes, we would have said, you have to, well, we probably would have let them know what our opinion on the changes were, and then we would have asked them, told them that they need to go to the HPC and ultimately for the, to the village board for those changes.
Do you, do you believe the homeowners understood what the process was, if they wanted to make changes?
It's a, it's a local landmark, and, and I'm not going to speak for the homeowners, but when you buy a local landmark, and you, I, I would hope so, but I, I, you know, don't want to speak for the homeowners.
Well, they use an architect and contractor as well, do you know whether the architect and contractor was aware?
Again, I would ask the architect or contractor.
Who's here tonight? Is the applicant here?
Yeah.
Yeah, so you can ask them, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Can I, again, new to me, but I guess I'm surprised if it's accurate, the roofing, and based on the letter that we received from the, from that historical, it said, metal wasn't part of this, this has nothing to do with it. So that means a drastic change, I mean, that's a big change. Why would the historical committee vote only one against and everybody else supported? Even staff said that's not consistent.
You know, I, I think, you know, the only thing I could think of is, there probably are examples where standing seam was used, it wasn't, it's clearly on a queen anne, it's probably not a roof type that was favored. I think from staff's point of view, especially from the, the porch on the front, that, changing that to standing seam, going away from what it had been since at least 1905, and I'm pretty confident from when it was built, it was probably wood shingles back then, but it was shingles, you know, seems to be something that we would not have recommended. I guess we're a little less concerned about the side porch because it's new. You know, the square columns, are we that concerned about square columns on a, a new porch that was added on? Probably not, no. I mean, that's, you know, would I've done it? Maybe not, but that doesn't mean that ultimately, you know, that's changing the character of the, the, the existing structure, the structure that they built, new around.
The letter's focused on the roof, though.
Yeah.
Right, Kathy's letter focused on.
Yes.
So, Mr. Adler, just to, but the other changes, or, these were, what was built was not what was approved, is that correct?
Correct, through some of the openings that I outlined, and then the, the columns.
Okay, so specifically, all of these things had been identified and had been previously approved, and then changes were made-
Correct.
-and constructed after-
Correct.
...the approval process.
And, go ahead.
I'm sorry, and so just so I understand, in terms of just the things that the staff might have recommended, I mean, just, so in, from your perspective, the, of the things that the Historic Preservation Commission approved, so the, from your perspective, what staff would have possibly suggested differently would have been the roof in the front?
Yes.
Just the front roof?
Right, I mean, I, again, yes.
And then the, and then the one, and then the window, the one, two windows that were taken out?
Correct.
To be put back in?
Correct, and, and also, when you look at this elevation, and yes, they mimic the, the material that goes around the window on the garage, it doesn't seem to make a lot of sense to put a square window there, when originally-
The square window where the garage is?
Over the garage.
Okay.
Right.
Okay.
And, you know, that's what it was originally.
And just, the round columns, are there round columns in the front?
Correct.
Got it, okay, just making sure I have all the facts.
Oh, I have one other question. Can you explain why the square columns aren't the same width? It's quite noticeable from the street.
You would have to ask the architect and the owner of that, I, I'm not sure.
You don't know, okay.
Yeah, I, I think they, there was a discussion about when you, on an angle, but that didn't necessarily make sense to me, but maybe I wasn't thinking about it correctly.
Okay, thank you.
And, and, so if you look at the standards of review, which ones are the ones that you think the, the board should be focused on in terms of-
Sure.
-as they relate to the roof?
When you look at two, and I, I think, you look at two, and it, and it could be for the roof and the round window, but it talks about distinguishing originally, original qualities or character of a building, structure, its site, shall not be destroyed, the removal or alteration of any historic material, which arguably shingles are compared to standing seam roof, or distinctive architectural features, which arguably the window could be considered, that such a feature shall be avoided when possible. So I, my guess is probably number two would be the one that I would say is most applicable. I think four, you could say, changes that may have taken place in the course of time, you know, these changes have acquired significance. I think there's some question whether, you know, whether that window was originally open, but it sure seems the 1905 picture shows that, you know, it was something that was operable, and changes do happen to these structures, you could, you could see from the, the photos that are included here. I mean, you could see a big difference between the screened porch, which was pre-addition, relatively recent, and what, what the house had back there in 1905.
Right, but we're not, this is, this is just relating to the, the other stuff was approved, this is relating to the roof and the windows and the-
Just the design elements, right, not, not the, not the garage, or the location, or the, the deck porch.
Mr. Adler, can you clarify, if, if, if this is not approved, what, what then does the property owner do?
If none of the request is approved, they would have to make the square columns round. I think they're, I'd, I'd have to look at the drawings, I don't know if they had caps on the, the bottom and the top, so they'd have to change those, they would have to change the openings to go back to what was approved, and then they would have to change the standing seam metal roof to asphalt shingles to match what was approved.
Thank you. Other questions for Mr. Adler? So I guess we'll call our director up.
Thank you, Mr. Adler.
Thank you, John. I'm Kathy Hussey-Arnson, I'm the Director of the Wilmet Historical Museum, and a village I wanted to say, in addition to what John said, that, remind you that in a couple of years, we'll be celebrating the 150th anniversary of the, of the village in 2022, just three, three years away, and local landmarks are part of the history, part of the history of the village. Of the more than 8,000 single-family homes here, there are only 32 structures, if, my last count, anyway, that are local landmarks. So there are not very many local landmarks in the village in total. And so I think it's very important that we look at each, each change to these local landmarks and consider them. And one of the things, the, the local landmark statue, as I understand it, does not deal with what's inside the, the house, just what's outside the, what's outside the structure. So it's, so what, what the Historic Preservation Commission has control over is what's outside, and what changes that are outside, and the, you know, something that the previous people talked about was going through the process and, and, and following the process, and, and here is an example of the architects not going, you know, getting an approval, and then making changes without coming back to the HPC or to the village at all, to say, but now we want to do something differently. And so, to me, especially when you're talking about a local landmark, that this is very important because potentially things are, are gone that we're trying to preserve on a house that, you know, now are, are just gone.
And your letter, your letter specifically references the roof, that's-
Because the, and the reason I did that was because the roof is very noticeable from Sheridan Road. It's a very, you know, if you're familiar with these metal roofs, that has a very particular profile to it, and, which, which, just is not consistent with a house of that, of that era.
It stands out, most of us probably drove it, and it, you notice it, you do.
Yeah, and so that's why I, I focused on the roof.
And it's actually visible from Two Streets, not Sheridan Road, but alone, but Maple Street as well, when I drove by.
Yes, right, that's true, that's true.
Could you briefly, and I, I mean briefly, but just discuss the historic significance of this particular local landmark?
Sure, so this is, this has, this is, has a connection of all the local landmarks in the village, this one has a connection that goes back the farthest in terms of local history. It's, it's, it's associated with Alexander McDaniel, who came here in the 1830s, and also the following owner, Benjamin Hill, who also came here with his family in the 1830s. So when you're talking about very early history and connection with a, you know, a house that has a connection with a very early history in the village, this is, this is the one, I think. The Hoffman House is another one of a very different sort, but this is, you know, if you're talking about the development of Wilmet, and Alexander McDaniel was, was on the first village board, he was very involved with setting, being here so early, he, they had a, they, they owned this land, built this, some version of this house in 1853, after he came back from the gold rush, earned some money, he started buying land, along with somebody else, Henry Dinji, in the, and they really did a lot to develop the village, getting the, the railroad to stop here, the, what's now Depot Nuevo, was the, was, they raised money by subscription to build a train station there in, in the 1870s. Alexander McDaniel was really instrumental in that. And so these, you know, and, and Benjamin Hill as well was very active in the village, the following, lived here basically all his life. And so I think this, this, it's very important to preserve, at least what's the exterior of the house, I think, for that reas, for those reasons, it really has a significant connection to village history.
Okay, any further questions for our Director of the Historical Museum?
Thank you, oh, I do have one more question. Do you get involved in process before the zoning, I mean, before the Historic Commission makes a decision?
Um, no, well, not, no, not, not necessarily, no.
Do you even know when changes are being recommended to an historic structure?
Um, you know, the reason I, the way I find out is I get, I get the agenda, and I look at what's, you know, what's coming up, and, and I think that's actually-
The HPC's agenda, I think she was referring to.
Yeah, right, the HPC, and also the village board agenda, if it's, something's coming up. Other than that, I'm unnecessarily notified.
Okay, thank you, thanks so much.
Okay, there's no more questions for staff, I'll ask the applicants to approach. So normally on a zoning case, I read off what the issues are, you know, that I'd want you to address, but I think, having listened to the conversation, you, you got it, so.
Yeah, I think so.
I'm Eric Weffing, also Wilmet resident, and architect, and this is Dan Neely.
I'm the homeowner of 301 Sheridan. I, I found the stuff about the historic, from the Historic Preservation Society, is that right? Museum, interesting. So, this is not our first time doing a house like this, is, I think is one of the most important things. I don't know whether you got the minutes from the first meeting we had with the Historic Preservation, I know the second were in your packet, but in the first one, it talks about our history of having done this before. We had a house in Madison, Wisconsin, where we did this, we went through the process of restoring a home, and it was a little different, and so someone asked the question, did we know exactly what was happening as far as what the process was? So I'll talk about the meeting that we had with HPC, the first meeting in which we talked about these various items. When it comes to the roof, I'll show you a number of photos here in a second, as far as the evolution of the roof of the house. The house has had at any point wood shingles, it has had lead treatments on the top of it, it has had asphalt shingles, and it's had, so it's had a number of different roofing items on there. When we had this conversation with HPC, and it isn't reflected in the minutes, but I think if you speak with Chairman Hut, Chairman Hutchinson, you would, you'd find out, there was lots of things as far as what are we going to do with the roof, and how are we going to make sure that we continue in the, in the process. We came at a, a metal roof based on research. As you know, with old houses, I don't know how many of you have old houses, but given that most of you live in Wilmet, I'm assuming most of you have old houses. It's, it's a journey, it's an adventure as you, as you go through this process, certainly it's been two years, almost four years, including the planning process with this house. And so, we came to the conclusion of a raised seam roof from a number of factors. One was we studied other houses, what did other houses have? And so, I'll show you a couple of photos of other houses, if that's okay. So we have a great dilapidated house, I don't know how this works, but, there we go.
Excuse me.
Similar, similar, similar period.
Could you tell us where these houses are, when you're talking about them?
Yeah, absolutely, so this, I believe, is in North Carolina, so, not, not local. I don't think any other houses I'm going to show you are actually local houses, although we have a number that have raised seams roofs. We have this house, again, similar style, similar structure, brick rather than, than wood siding. And this house here that we, we studied, this house, I think, was the most interesting, which was Senator Frost's house, a little more ornate than ours, but had, again, the singular column down the side, and had a raised seam roof. This picture, I believe, is from 1860, is when that house was set, so probably most similar to our house, although it, again, it does have higher brick on the side, but we studied this house as we were going through the process of picking the roof. Other things that went into consideration, so safety went into consideration. We wanted to go with a wood, wood shingle roof, when we, we came out of HPC, and I would say it was quite fluid, I didn't understand that we were, hey, you know what, we were locked in, because we did have, and I think it's in the notes as well, we were, how are we going to get these pressed metal pieces to put on top of the roof, so it actually looks like the original house did, which is like this. And if you can see there along the top, that's actually what the roof used to look like. And so, we were talking with the committee of how are we going to get those made, and so those weren't specifically pointed out in any of the approvals, so we thought we were actually in somewhat of a fluid process when it came to the roof. And so, we went, we were going to try and get a wood, wood shingle, a wood shingle roof. When we went to the fire marshal, talking about the, should that, is that a product we want on our house, the answer was, you don't want that product on your house. And so, we tried to find something else. And, you know, with respect to owning a house like this, you don't ever own a house like this, it's just simply you're responsible for that house for the period of time that you live in it. And this is a house that we want to last for another 150 years, and so putting a metal raised seam roof on it seemed to be the most obvious choice, because we wanted it to last for another 150 years, so that when we're all dead, someone else can come and stand here and have a discussion around some, a topic like this, because it should last for another 150 years. And so that was the process we went through by which we picked the, picked the roof. The other comment that was made, and I go to the, the list of 10 items that you, we're supposed to comply with, I forget what they're called, the-
Standards of rehabilitation, rehabilitation, it's not standards of-
I think it's the secondary, the interior, that actually, that comes up with the list. One of the items there was, that was discussed, again, at the Historic, Historic Committee, was they, they wanted separation from the garage and the porch. So the rear of the house, we look at the previous porch, so this was the previous porch that was there, which, by all members, and I, everyone had agreed that from Maple, that was an eyesore, so they wanted that gone. So instead, they wanted, let's see, I have a photo of it, right here, they wanted this to look different than this, because it was going, oh, sorry.
Give her a word, thank you.
Sorry, they wanted this to look different than this, and so, if I show you this photo, you can't see it on the photo.
Question.
Thank you.
So here, they wanted, they wanted this to look different, was the, was the idea, there was some separation from it, and so we went through the process of how are we going to provide some separation, that's how we came to the conclusion of a metal roof. We did not go back through the committee, which is something we should have done, we did not come back, and that, to be honest, I know there was mention by someone that it was the architect's problem, it actually wasn't, it was the homeowner's problem. So we actually, we went through a process of saying, okay, what are we going to do? And we were in a state where if we had left a roof off this house for the period of time it takes us to go from through Historic to here, it's, we started this process in May, the house would have probably been ruined. And so at least that's that portion of the house. So we mentioned this at the Historic Society as well, that that process was going to take too long. And so, we, we wanted to make sure we put a roof on the house, and so we made a decision. We made a call, rightly or wrongly, we made a call on what we want, we're going to put on the house, and we feel, we felt as though we'd studied what should have been on the house, and we came to a conclusion of what roof type that we were going to use on the house. And that's ultimately how we landed at, putting a raised seam roof on the house.
So, looking at the standards for rehabilitation, you know, number two, which was highlighted, is the distinguishing original qualities or character of a building, structure, or site and its environment should not be destroyed, removal, or alteration of any historical material or distinctive architectural feature should be avoided when possible. You know, how do you, what's your, what's your argument on that, that, you know, you're in compliance with that?
So this was the porch that was removed. There was no roof there. It was a flat rubber roof. I don't think it was historically relevant. It was a, something that wasn't there before. On the front of the house, there was a rubber roof and a shingle roof on top of it. The under roof was actually falling in. And so we replaced the roof on the front. So the front roof wasn't like this. I don't have a, I don't think I have a, I probably have a picture of the front of the roof. Oh, right here. So that's the, it's the original porch on the front. The porch looks nothing like that now. It doesn't have those columns. It doesn't have those two shapes that are on the roof. It has a single, single elevation on that roof, as you see. Here's an elevation here. There's a separate elevation here. This is not the original porch of the house that's currently on the house.
And so. This one other technical issue on a roof slope that's less than 412, you really shouldn't put a shingle on that roof. Because it's just, the lower the slope of the roof, the more you get moisture coming back under the shingles. So it's a technical issue on top of also the longevity issue and quite a bit more expensive.
So let me just, I understand what you're saying is that, given the angle of the roof, shingles are not an appropriate material?
Much more technically sound material is standing, absolutely.
So can I ask a question on that?
Of course.
So if that's the set of circumstances, then I'd just be interested in then if, why that, why you would have actually, when you got in front of the Historic Preservation Commission, would have proposed that? If you already knew going into it, the slope of the roof, and you know, you know, I'm, I'm wondering why then, when you met with them, you would have even gotten.
I would say that we felt as though it was a fluid situation because when we had talked about the actual roof material, we didn't feel like we were locked into a roof material. What we felt was getting approved at the Historic Society, Historic Meeting, was this porch, which was, we were removing the porch on the side and making a wraparound porch. We felt as though we were getting approved for a garage, which was now attached to the house. And we felt as though we were getting approved for some exterior items that were also, some window items that were on there as well. I didn't feel as though we were getting approved for a specific material that was on the roof. And it was, there was a, there was a long dialogue, and it was probably the most lengthy dialogue that we had at HPC, where Erica Block was here.
I have a question. Did I understand Mr. Adler correctly to say that this also, that they also failed to get a building permit with respect to the changes? And that one was required?
Yeah. I mean, what I, what I meant is that.
Of course, they got a permit for the major work, the garage. But when you change roof material or you change openings, you should come in and amend the plans.
You don't know that you go back for a building permit when you change a roofing material.
You should, you, yes, you should give us.
I believe Mr. Adler probably understands our rules.
Yes. I mean, how many projects I've worked on in Wilmette? If an owner, you know, got a change to, from a metal roof and it wasn't a historic project, you guys would not, you have been screaming that we should submit for a new permit.
You, you come in for a roofing, you come in for a roofing permit, you indicate the roofing type. We would want you to indicate the change in roofing type. If somebody's going from, somebody's going from a shingle roof to a standing seam roof, that's a different type of roof.
I, I agree with that, but.
And we would want to make, we would want to make sure the roof that was doing it understands what needs to be done.
Let me clarify. It's not that they didn't have a permit to build a roof.
Correct.
When, when it changed, they should have gone in and modified their permit.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. And typically, when people come in for roofing work, it's a separate roofing permit, and they'll be specific. They mentioned for wood shingles, we require them to be sprayed with, so that they're, you know, that they're safe, they're not going to burn. We make sure that, you know, that if somebody's going from asphalt to cedar shingles, or if they're going from asphalt, standing seam, that the work that's going to be done is going to be compliant.
So I.
I just have one comment on that. You're not saying that this isn't a technically sound roof?
No, not a, not, not.
The contractor installs, right?
Absolutely.
I just want to put that on the record.
We, no.
We're not trying to slip in.
Let me, let me, let me interrupt the conversation here for a second because there's a lot of discussion around the original meeting. And because this came to us with a favorable recommendation from HPC, the minutes from the other meeting aren't included here.
They are actually.
Where are they?
They're, they're at the end of the packet, June 7th, 2017.
All right. Well, I, I, I see them now.
4.1. So they are actually included.
I'm, I'm going to offer up the suggestion of tabling this because I'd like, I'd like more time to understand this.
Me too. I would too. Thank you.
So, that's what, I'm going to, I'm going to entertain a motion to table it to the next meeting and we'll bring it back up.
Before you do your motion, I would also like to say then, I would, this board is then responsible for the safety of my children and the people in our neighborhood that go through that alley. Because right now, we are unable to finalize this project and have been able to because of the process of this village. And so it's been since May that we haven't been able to go through this process. Two children have almost been killed, not, killed, two children have almost been injured in our alley as a result of us not being able to finish and be able to put up a fence.
I'm not sure I understand the.
So we have not been able to go through final inspections at our house.
Right.
So because we haven't been able to go through final inspections, we have not been able to then go through to the next step of getting anyone to come and do an inspection so we can install a fence. There's no fence on the back of our yard right now because we had a construction fence. Construction fence has been taken down. And so now our alley isn't, we're not able to install in our alley.
So you couldn't put a construction fence back up?
We could install a, reinstall a construction fence.
Okay. If there's concerns on safety, you know, I understand. But is that what you were coming up to say, Mr. Adler?
Well, I was going to also indicate we had a, an issue with a sport car being put in without a permit. And that's another reason why we stopped construction. It wasn't just on this work.
We don't have a sport construction, a sport car.
All right, all right.
We don't have a parking pad being installed. So I, if you're going to make comments, like, let's be factual about this.
Yeah. Guys, I'm, I'm, Mr. Adler, you can respond if you'd like, but I'm going to, we're going to table this right now, okay? So, assuming that people will vote that way.
Well, assuming he wants to table it.
No, I can table it right now.
Yeah.
I'll entertain a motion to table this to the next board meeting.
I would like to make a motion to table this until the next meeting.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Call a roll?
Voice vote sufficient.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? All right. So it's tabled. We'll see you in two weeks.
Great. Thank you. What do we do with additional materials? Do we send those?
To Community Development.
Second?
To the Community Development Department, and they will get it to the board.
Right. Thank you.
Okay. All right. So now we're back to Trustee Barrow. Glad we started early tonight.
No kidding.
No other matters, Mr. President.
Thank you, Trustee Barrow. Finance Committee, Trustee Kennedy.
All items are on the consent agenda?
Municipal Services Committee, Trustee Solomon.
Good news is I have two items this evening, and they'll be brief. We need a little levity. We have two items this evening. First is item 6.41, which is the adoption of Resolution Number 2019 R9, approving a memorandum of understanding between the Village of Wilmette and Wilmette Park District regarding the location of underground reservoirs. So I believe, I'm going to.
Yeah. So you have to make them, you make a motion to that?
A motion to approve.
All right. And is there a second?
Second.
Okay. So it's been moved and seconded. I think, are we, who are we starting with, Mike? Are we starting with you or are we starting with Bridget?
Uh, this will be Bridget.
Okay. Ms. Berger, welcome. I think we're going to do a short presentation just on, you know, sort of how to, how we got to where we are. A little bit of context for what's in front of us here.
Good evening. This is a really big, exciting night, so we're happy to be here. It was a long process. And I'm going to take you all the way back to January of 2014. Actually flooding in Wilmette goes way back prior to 2014.
I was going to say, Trustee Kersman would have mentioned that if he did not.
Moving in the right direction, just keep on your way.
Yes, 2008, yes, September of 2008. And so it's been, in our hearts and our minds for a long time. In January of 2014, we officially hired Christopher Burke to start the original study of our West Side Sewer System. And took about three years going through that process. As Trustee Kersman knows, multiple meetings, both with the public and with Municipal Services Committee. But finally, in January of 2017, I'm sorry, January 2015, we came up with our three alternatives that the Village Board considered and ultimately hired a second consultant in January of 2017, Standtec, to do a value engineering of those options as well as any other option available to the board to help resolve our flooding issue. Again, that, four years into it, finally, April of 2018, the Village Board made the decision to choose the neighborhood storage option, which we've been working on diligently since. Last August, we hired Christopher Burke to start the 30% design and Phase 1 analysis for us. And immediately upon signing those engineering agreements, we started working with the Park District. They're obviously a key stakeholder and have been working with them closely ever since. In February of 2019, we presented to the board the optimization plan, which actually improved the effectiveness of the project from protecting 71% of vulnerable structures to all the way up to 98% of vulnerable structures. And we're proceeding in that manner. In March, and really March through May, then the Park District had to deliberate on a couple of different things. At Community Playfield, they had to determine, actually, I'm sorry, for the first phase of the Stormwater Project, they had to determine if the site would be Community Playfield or Centennial Park. And they chose Community Playfield. And then they held a series of public meetings, both in the field. They had a field visit meeting with residents at each of the parks, as well as a public hearing in this room for anybody who wanted to speak on those three park sites. The conclusion of those meetings was in, in, I'm sorry, I have to go back one step. In April then, I'm sorry, April through the, through July, through those meetings, it was determined that there was significant concerns over the amount of trees that were to be removed. Our engineering solutions was always to build gravity tanks, but the gravity tanks are very large and shallow. Having heard that concern from the neighbors.
The reason we went in that direction is the gravity tanks don't require any above-ground facilities or, or anything. So that the, the park would be the park and there wouldn't be a pump station, for example.
Exactly. Right. And having heard the concern among the residents, we went back to Chris Burke and said, finesse your designs to see if you can come up with smaller footprint options that rely on pumping, but also protect as many trees as possible. And through that process, we have, in August of 2019, the Park District did ultimately vote on the three exhibits that you see in the Memorandum of Understanding, which is attached in your packet. And I'm happy to say that the, the original plans removed 121 trees. The exhibits that you have in your packet, the ones that we're going to proceed on through the MOU, removed 13 trees. So through that process, we were able to save 108 trees, including the Cottonwood Grove and the Oak Grove, Cottonwood Grove at Community Playfield and the Oak Grove at Thornwood Park.
And I, and I asked you earlier today, you said that in the, sort of the area around the projects, not the entire park areas related, there are approximately 194 trees total. And that you said 13 now are the number between, combined, all three parks, not each, that will be removed.
Correct.
Okay.
So that's all I have for presentation-wise. I'm happy to answer any questions you have. But really, this is a major shift in direction from planning to hard engineering. And with this MOU approval tonight, our staff and our consulting team has confidence that we can move forward with our design plans and specifications so that we're ready to break ground summer of 2020 on the first phase, which is Community Playfield.
And before, don't go anywhere yet, but, so regarding the content of the MOU, Mr. Stein, just, you want to just, this isn't binding. There's, there's, what do we need to think about in terms of what the MOU actually says and what we're agreeing to at this point?
So the MOU between the Village and the Park District is essentially a document that will allow us to negotiate in good faith the specific terms of easements for each of these three locations. This document does require additional agreements to happen in the future. So therefore, the only thing that's really binding on this is that we operate in good faith and have these conversations. The MOU is essentially designed to assure both the Village and the Park District of where this project is going to be located on their property. We would need specifications as well as surveys and other legal descriptions to have a proper easement. That costs money. That costs a lot of time. We wanted these assurances before we spent that money, and I'm sure the Park District wanted the assurances to know that we were, this, this is exactly where we were looking to do it. So that is the nature of this agreement. It will just require us to have more conversations. But this will deem where the locations are to be.
And in the staff's judgment, this gives us adequate assurance that we've got a deal, if you will, with the Park District so that we can move forward because we have to spend money on engineering and surveys and the like, I mean, quite a bit of money on engineering design. And you need to know where it's going before you can start to design it. You need to have some of that design work done before you can do an intergovernmental agreement.
Correct. That's correct. So, yeah.
All right. So questions for Trustee Fong?
I have a question, and maybe this is premature, but I know, you know, there's been a lot of neighborhood involvement and so much talk about Thornwood Park, about Community Playfields. And I believe less about Hibbert, and I know residents have concerns. But can you maybe talk through the engineering process about Hibbert Park? And, you know, what changes, you know, have been made or what, you don't want to speak for the Park Board, but just kind of how that process goes because I feel like everything was so flushed out for Thornwood Park and for Community Playfields. And I just want to make sure that, you know, each of those parks has had adequate, you know, discussion and understanding.
Absolutely. And just to be clear, the Hibbert Park went through the same public process as the other two parks. It was no different. The difference with Hibbert Park, though, is the Park Board wanted to make sure that they were looking long-term for Hibbert Park in the Rec Center. And as part of our due diligence working with the Park District, we hired their architect, the Park District's architect, to do a space needs analysis of Hibbert Park. They wanted to make sure both now and in the future, our underground structure didn't impede their ability to redevelop that site. So it was a little bit longer process. And basically, their architect came up with options and said, this is the area that you can't have. So the remaining area is what our consultants use for our underground detention. The original plan removed 36 trees. Again, as part of this whole evaluation to try and save as many trees as possible, we came back with two additional options that created a smaller footprint. Still within the area, the Park District said we could work a deeper tank. And there were two variations. The first variation was about an 11-foot-deep tank, and that removed eight trees, kind of in the center of the park. The second option is a 15-foot-deep tank. It would have saved six of those eight trees, so two trees removed. But the cost is nearly a million dollars extra for those six trees to be saved. So I think, having heard all that information, the Park Board supported the alternative that wasn't as deep, that removed eight trees to save the $900,000.
And my recollection is that at both Thornwood and Community Playfields, the projects were actually less expensive. The ones that saved the trees, the alternatives that saved more trees, were actually less expensive. The trade-off being there would need to be a pump station above ground instead. So in the case of Hibbert Park, while you saved, whatever 36 minus 8 is, 28?
Yes.
28 trees. To save 34 trees, it would cost an incremental $1 million for those six trees. And what is, we, we plant a lot of trees every year. What's a tree, what does a tree cost to plant?
Well, it depends on the location or the tree. Basically, we budget about $50,000 a year to plant, depending on how much they cost, anywhere from 200 to 220 trees or so. So thinking about the nine, I think 900,000, somewhere between 900,000 and $1 million was the, the additional cost. So just being conservative and saying that you get 200 trees for $50,000 a year, every year, keeping in mind, we also take out over 200 trees every year. That's just the nature of managing the urban canopy, is that you have losses and you plant new ones. The 900,000 is the equivalent of 18 years of all the spending that we do on planting trees in the village. Or put another way, it's the equivalent of buying about 3,600 trees or 600 trees per each specimen that would be removed at Hibbert, even assuming that all six of them survived the construction process, which is far from a given.
So a million dollars for six trees? So, so a million dollars for six trees, a lot?
Yes.
That's sort of, okay, all right. Other questions for Ms. Berger? The engineers are all here, too. I see several of them. They love talking at public meetings.
A quick question. Bridget, so then, assuming this is approved tonight, then what, then what happens in a real sense, in terms of our dealing with, with the Park District?
Now we get into the details. Where there are pump stations at the two park sites, at Thornwood Park and Hibbert Park, we'll start talking about the location of those pads to house the equipment. We'll start talking in great detail about what they want the park to look like when we're done with construction, and those are all the details that will go into the eventual intergovernmental agreement.
Are those matters that will come before this board, or are they Park District Board matters?
The IGA will come before both boards. But really, as far as how we get to the points in the IGA, that's something that staff, our staff will work with the Park District staff on.
Thank you.
Yeah, so we'll have, we ultimately will, we will approve that, and look, the, the deal, if you will, with the Park District from the get-go was that the parks were going to be enhanced, they were going to be improved, and at a minimum, you're talking about drainage, because that's what we're doing here. So you'd expect a better park at the end of the day than we started with, and that was, I think that's consistent with what the residents want. They want their parks to be at least as good, if not better, after we do our work, and I think it's consistent with the Park District and their mission of protecting the park. So all of that will be laid out, though, in the IGA, right? I mean, real specific stuff.
Well, that's absolutely correct. So the reason why you don't have an IGA is because there are so many details, not only of the locations, you know, the depth of the tanks and things like that, but what, what is the restoration going to look like? What's our access point's going to look like? What is our, you know, are we able to enter the facility anytime we need? And the answer to those questions should be yes, but all those have to be in a document, which would be essentially an intergovernmental agreement that is an easement. We would be getting a perpetual easement on each of these properties.
Right now, we have basically drawings of where the Park District intends us to do the work, but to do the, the actual intergovernmental agreement and the easements that go with it. You're going to need actual meets and bounds, legal descriptions, you're going to need the type of engineering drawings as attachments that are going to cost considerable sums of money, and I think both parties recognize that, and before the Village would go out and spend many hundreds of thousands, or probably in excess of millions of dollars-
Millions of dollars, yeah.
...on drawings to get to even 30% design that we would need for this agreement, it was important that we all knew which direction we were heading, as opposed to spending a lot of money on design work that ended up being fruitless.
Will, will the, do we expect that the Park District will retain their own advisors and experts and counsel and who knows what?
I'll speak as far as the attorney. I do know that they have their own attorney, not part of their staff, but through a law firm, one of my old partners, is Andrew Payne. So I worked with him on the MOU directly. A lot of these changes were cooperation between he and me and myself, and I expect the same process to happen again once with, with the easements.
Well, there be, there won't be duplication of engineering necessarily, though, would there be?
Early on in the process, they did express interest in hiring their own engineer to review our plans.
Like just a review, a review?
Right, sure.
Okay.
I note that the, that the MOU, I believe somewhere, and please point this to me, Jeff, says that it's to be done without cost to them. I think that, that phrase or that word appears somewhere.
Yeah, it's the construction of the project is to be done at a cost, not to the Park District.
Right, so were they to retain, for example, council or other engineering advisors or whomever, is that for us, or is that for them?
Thus far, as far as I'm concerned, this MOU does not address that, and it'd be their own cost. And in fact, I don't believe I'll be getting a bill from Trustler for Mr. Payne's work.
So I know there's been a lot of public engagement, you know, both with the Village Board and with the Park District. I'm sure as this process goes on, residents are, you know, you talk about now is the time for the details, and we've already gotten letters, you know, about the details. How do those get answered? And are those primarily for the Park District in terms of what the park is going to look like afterwards, or, you know, what is the process so, you know, residents know what's going on, but obviously, you know, the engineers have to do their work as well?
Sure. I, I think as far as our stakeholder involvement, that is going to continue at this pace up until and beyond the point that we break, go into construction. So we intend to, of course, residents can speak at any public meeting, anytime there's an action being approved by either the Park Board or the Village Board, but we will, at some point in the near future, when we have enough designed on, Community Playfield is our first phase, have another public open house and invite the residents to come in and see the plans and comment early enough in the process so that we can make changes. And I think that's particularly, they're not going to really care about the underground structure and how we build it, but they will care about making sure we save the trees and protect the trees and plant rain gardens and bioswales and all the things that are going to make it a lovely park when we're done. So we want to keep that engagement early and often throughout this whole process.
There really has been sort of an unprecedented amount of engagement here, when I think about all of the outreach and all the meetings, I mean, going back years now, but in particular, when we got close to decisions in, in the spring of, is that the spring of this year? I, I, yeah.
April of last year, we made the decision.
So, first of all, I think the outreach that you guys made has been incredible. One thing that I think might be helpful for residents, just piggybacking on what Trustee Plunkett said, was I think this is a really nice background, this kind of slide you have. I think it would be helpful for residents to see what, between now and construction, what's going to happen and when they can expect points of, you know, like, it would just be a plan, but something to say, you know, we're thinking we'll have design in an open house in March, and then we're thinking we'll have one, you know, maybe something just to lay out especially for those that, you know, that are so interested in our first place, which will be Community Playfields. And I think we just learned from this experience that the closer it becomes, the more feedback we're going to get. And I think the closer it becomes, the more feedback we're going to get as well from residents who might not be impacted by this in terms of flooding, but will be impacted financially.
Or by construction inconvenience.
Yes, yep.
So, yeah.
So that, I would like us to think about doing that.
Yeah, and we've got, obviously, a common communicator-
And then I have just one more point, which I just want to make sure, looking at, in the present, on the material that we had, there's a proposed project schedule, and it talks about year one, year two, year three, or whatever, and it talks about the cost and things like that by year. I just want to make sure that some of the things here, for example, the optimization scenarios, are not yet approved by the board in terms of what, when those optimization scenarios would be included.
That's correct.
Is that true? Okay.
Further questions for Ms. Berger or any of the other staff members? Okay?
Thank you, Bridget.
And again, engineers are going to, I hope you're not going to feel left out if you're, if you don't get to speak at the public meeting. Okay. All right. So at this point, I'll, I'll open the meeting to public comment. I'll remind everyone that under the Village rules for public comment during a Village Board meeting, individuals are allotted up to three minutes to address the board. So are there any members of the audience who would like to address the board at this point in time? I count two. Okay, three. Everybody who wants to talk, line up. And-
Three minutes each.
And we'll be done after three, unless anybody else wants to get up and line up.
All right.
Okay.
Can I start?
You can start. Welcome, sir.
So I'm Ben Tulsky, 339 LeMans. We need to have flood relief. You got to approve this, we want you to approve it. However, I want you to approve Community Playfields and Thornwood Park, where there's been a lot of talk.
I'm sorry, sir, would you, would you speak up? I'm sorry, I'm having a problem.
Can you, can you hear it now?
Yeah, yeah.
All right, so I'd like you to approve Community Playfields and Thornwood Park. Both of those got a lot of input, people are happy with the decisions, but in Hibbert Park, I'd like you to have it go back to the Park District so they can discuss it more. So basically, you're going to start Community Playfields next summer, Hibbert Park is still two years out, there's still time to discuss what's going on there. But, you know, we saved the trees in Community Playfields, that did not happen at all in Hibbert Park. Eight trees were being cut down. There's an option to cut down only two trees. I prefer zero, but two's better than, than zero. And a whole, I mean, two's not as good as zero, but it's better than eight. So I've been a part of this, I was at the meeting in April when they discussed this, so was Trustee Kersman. We discussed saving trees then. At this last meeting last week, the Park District Board said basically that we had no input into Hibbert Park, and that's kind of the issue. We did have input, maybe not as much, and I kind of figured with the, with the Cottonwood trees and Community Playfields, that was speaking as the, like, the whole of the Village. I thought it was, everyone in the Village was talking about that, not just, not just one park, I thought it applied to everyone. So I didn't create any kind of campaign to save the trees in Hibbert, I figured it was already done for me. Well, obviously not the case. So I've been talking to Brian Abbott and Mike Murdock for the last few days, and then on Thursday, I started a campaign to save the trees. I created a petition, I put it onto Nextdoor, I posted signs on the actual trees themselves, I went door-to-door knocking on doors, and I learned a lot. People just do not know what's going to happen. No one was aware they were cutting down these trees, no one knew there was a second option that would save the trees. And quite honestly, everyone wants flood relief, but they also want their park. Our kids play there every single day. So I have 106 signatures as of this afternoon for residents that want flood relief and want to save our trees. I understand it's a million dollars? A million dollars? We save tens of millions by not doing the conveyance plan. What's a million dollars at this point? It's $2 per resident per year, when you amortize it over 30 years.
30 seconds.
It's next to nothing. So what I'm asking you guys now, please consider how important this park is to our children, to the community, to the Rec Center. They have kindergarten enrichment there, they have preschool, they have everything else you can imagine. The kids use this park. Please, it's not just they can be replaced, this is shade that cannot get replaced, you cannot plant trees on the tanks. This area will be desolate forever. Don't teach our kids that it's okay to destroy the earth to save a few bucks, because that is not okay. That is why we have issues like climate change today, and we've got to solve this problem. So I'm asking you, please stop the flooding and save Hibbert Park. Find a compromise that can do both. And if it costs a bit more money, it's not the end of the world, it's the right thing to do. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Can I give you, would you like to have the petition?
Sure. You can get it.
It's a bit, hello?
That's okay.
See all of it.
Sure, thank you. Welcome. So is there, is there one more that wants to talk? Okay, no? Okay, so just two, okay. Welcome.
Good evening. Rick Prohof, 24, 35, Mona Lane. As you know, we created a group particularly to save the Grove, and I appreciate everybody's help, working together with the Park Board and the engineers and this board to come up with a compromise so that flooding can be addressed, but not to take down the trees in the Grove. I thank you, the trustees, Sarah Senta-Plunkett and Kathy Dodd, for trying to create more of a process to engage with us. We're glad we could convince the Park Board that maybe their decision wasn't the best one for the alternative ultimately chosen. Ultimately, they did vote for the T configuration, but they didn't actually have it until the day of. So I still want to find out what is the process? Not only when can we come up and make comments, but when can we ask questions? And I don't think that's really been established very well by the Village or the Park Board to establish what is the process? Is there a committee that we can come to where we can ask questions of the Board or of those committees, committees or the engineers specifically? All we've been told is that we can comment. When do we get to ask questions? How is that engagement process work?
Yeah, I, the- Well, I don't want to cut off your time, you're, I'm going to-
That's okay, I mean, that's really-
Yeah, or I can, or I-
Just a-
Basically, we know we need to work in a public engagement process, it's going to start when, after we start working with the Park District and the engineers, so we have some structure that can be given to a discretion. In other words, if we want to have a meeting, what, what are we looking at, what are we talking about? And, and I assure you, we'll be, I can't tell you exactly when it's going to be or exactly what it's going to be right now. We do want to make sure that the residents continue to be engaged. There's been different concerns expressed to us about Thornwood Park, for example, and what residents there would like to see Playfield, obviously, as you know, and Hibbert as well. As Bridget and her team starts to work on what it would actually look like, we get input from the Park District, then there's an opportunity, as both public bodies have to work through this, that we can give information to the residents and give residents as many opportunities as we can to be heard. I just can't tell you exactly-
No, I'm not looking for the exact process yet, I'm sure you'll define it as you go along, as you will with the intergovernmental agreement. It's just that the concerns, and I'll just relate them one more time, the engagement process has not allowed us to ask the questions about whatever the ultimate design will be, is how is it addressing any subsurface flows that are run underneath our properties? So that's a major concern. There are some residents who I think are more concerned than perhaps I am, but they are concerned that the ultimate design needs to accommodate the existing drainage flow, which would be not only surface but subsurface flows. And the STAN-TEC report specifically addresses that risk, and we just would like to know how is that being adjusted or addressed. I think that's the gist, so thank you very much. I look forward to learning more about the process of, less active engagement from this visit, Ben. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, so those are the two individuals who wish to be heard, so public comments concluded. Are there any questions for the staff, for the trustees? All right, so I'm going to, I'm going to say a few words here, sort of begin discussion, and as usual, I'll be more verbose than I should be. But first off, I'm going to start by thanking the Womack Park District for their work and their cooperation over the past several months. Local government works best when all of the units of government cooperate, and we're very lucky in Womack, and I would say that's not the case in all areas of our country where intergovernmental cooperation is the norm here. And I was certainly optimistic when we engaged with the Park District that we would figure something out. And, you know, the commissioners and their staff, they got educated on the project, they reached out to the community to get input, they discussed at multiple public meetings what they were thinking, they hosted meetings at the locations, they debated, and then they formulated their conclusions regarding the appropriate use of Park District property. And, you know, we all work for the same residents, but each unit of local government has specific responsibilities, and we have a focus on different assets, we own different assets, and we provide different services to the community. And that's not just the Village Board and the Park Board, it's also the library, it's also each of the school districts. So they did their job, we let them do their job, we told people we were going to let them do their job, that was a concern back in April. We worked on this for many years, and the Park District, in a relatively short period of time, did a very thorough job, and they completed their work on the timeframe that we requested so that we could keep this project on track. If the Park District had taken three more months, we would be breaking ground a full year later. So I thank them for the thorough job that they did for the residents, and I thank them for, for being timely in their work. I also want to thank all the residents, they're not, all the residents who have been engaged throughout this process are not here tonight. I'm not sure this room would hold everyone that has been engaged at one part or another of the process, but in particular, the residents who most recently have become part of the process. We've been discussing this for a long time, we're nearing a conclusion on the scope, and we are going to continue, as staff has indicated, to engage residents in the process. And, you know, Bridget described some of the work that's been done and the timeframe, but, you know, I'll guarantee you, we all know more about sewers than we ever thought we would, between the engineering work that's done, our review of it, we did extensive cost-benefit analysis, and again, as I mentioned, an unprecedented amount of public engagement in terms of really, really trying to let people know what's going on. And unless you're personally affected by something in front of the board, it's hard to break through the noise. There's a lot of people, there's a lot of stuff going on in people's lives, there's a lot of things on the internet and on the TV and in their email and the like, so we really made a, a, a very big effort to engage, and we engaged our colleagues at the other governmental bodies, the Park District and the school districts as well. And we actually made a couple of decisions along the way that were fairly meaningful. So this phase of processes, as we all know, the preservation of the trees became a very big issue. It was discussed at length at the Park Board, and, you know, I'm going to just reiterate the statistics, because I think we did a pretty good job here. You know, between the three parks- everything, there are currently, the numbers that I was given was 194 trees. Okay? And the original plans, and the reason again that the original plans, the gravity plans were used, was that there are no above-ground facilities required. But those plans called for the removal of 121 trees. And we all listened to the community. We provided alternatives that in a couple of the cases were actually less expensive to not remove as many trees. And the current plans now call for a total of 13 trees across three different parks to be removed. And frankly, in construction projects, we all try and protect the trees, but oftentimes, you know, in terms of being efficient here, that's a pretty good statistic, I believe, in terms of protecting the trees that are existing in the park. It is great that we're at this point, and as Mr. Stein explained, this is a non-binding agreement, but we need this agreement, sort of an agreement in principle of where these tanks are going to be located. And there'll be a formal IGA that'll come in front of us, but this gives us enough assurance that we're going to be able to move forward with the project, move forward and spend money on engineers with a level of confidence that we're going to, you know, get this done. Risking, you know, you don't want to spend that money without knowing you sort of have an agreement in principle, and I think that's where we are today. Look, I mean, a lot of familiar faces in the crowd tonight that have been to these meetings over the past literally six years now. It's taken a lot of time. This is a project that has a cost, a scope, a complexity that's really meaningful. I mean, it's significant. So we've been careful. We've been deliberate, but it has taken a lot of time. And with this agreement, we'll keep the project moving along on time. And, you know, we've been talking about, we've sort of lost for a minute here, the substantial community benefit that this project is going to bring to people who live west of Bridge Road. Whether or not you have a foot or two feet or six feet of water in front of your property, every single resident who lives west of Bridge Road and who's served by that, by this separate sewer system, is going to benefit from an incremental place, a new place for water to go. And we can't lose sight of that. There is a bigger picture here, and it's taken us a long time to get here, but this is really sort of a breakthrough moment. And there's still a lot of work to do before we get shovels in the ground. There's still a lot of engagement with the community. There's still a lot of discussion with the park district. But this is a pretty monumental night. So now, as usual, I have been too long in my comments. I will open it up for any of the trustees who'd like to make comments. Certainly, you know, nobody should feel an obligation to make a comment, but would anybody like to add any comments?
The only thing I would add would really be a special thank you to Bridgette and her staff. When I think of all the emails we've received and the public meetings we've been to, and all of those have been handled thoroughly, gracefully, respectfully, and they really reflect very well, I think, on the entire staff and really on the village. So thank you, and thanks to all the folks that work with you.
Thank you, Trustee Barrow. It was a very good addition. All right. So we have a motion. It's been seconded. Roll call vote.
Trustee Sullivan.
Aye.
Trustee Kennedy.
Aye.
Trustee Dodd.
Aye.
Trustee Kursman.
Aye.
Trustee Barrow.
Aye.
Trustee Plunkett.
Aye.
President Polinski.
Aye. So the motion carries. The resolution approving the memorandum of understanding has been adopted. Back to Trustee Sullivan.
Our next item this evening is item 6.42, which is the presentation regarding the annual road program. This was a decision by municipal services committee that rather than meeting separately this evening to hear this presentation and then have it re-presented to this board and hear the same presentation, we thought in a way of being efficient, since we all like roads, we'd do it at this meeting.
The only thing we like more than roads is sewers.
And maybe soon cannabis. Just kidding.
So question is, it's a long presentation, and we've got a few more. We good to go with it? Or a break now, or what?
It's a good question. It's only 9:15, but we've been at it for 2 hours and 15 minutes. This is, I'm fine. Would anybody like a break? If any of the trustees would like a break, we could take a five-minute break.
Are we going to take a break at some point, or?
Well, yeah, we'd probably take a break after the road program.
Okay. We just get a glass of water.
We take, yeah.
I'd like to take a break, too.
Let us recess for five minutes, or seven minutes. It's 9:18. We'll reconvene at 9:25.
Do we get a sander?
We can all use those five...
We're reconvening the meeting at 9:28 PM. Our mics are live again, so welcome. We're going to start with, so trustee Sullivan, you introduced this, right?
We just introduced it's just a presentation.
Just a presentation.
Everybody's on the roads where...
I think we're turning it over to Mike to start.
I'm going to intro it and then I'm going to turn it over to the engineering staff. But just as a reminder for the board tonight, this is just an informational presentation. We're not seeking any decisions to be made by the board tonight. We obviously expect more discussion and consideration to be had over the next couple of months. What we are looking for from the board are what other questions or scenarios you may want us to run as we prepare for our September 16th meeting. And we'd also invite trustees to come in and meet with the staff prior to our next couple of committee of the holes if you want to dig into the road program a little bit deeper and make sure you have a solid understanding of it before we move forward in making some decisions.
Yeah, the last, the last time we really went deep on the road program was 2016, right? For the 2017 budget, we ended up increasing funding at that point in time, but that was two or three extra board, the extra committee of the whole meetings.
Just three.
Like three, four extra hours each. So I think we're, we're trying to get ahead of that here. The staff is trying to get ahead of that, make the presentation and then make it easy for trustees to get questions answered and to get deep with the staff one-on-one if, if that's the desire or to ask for additional options when we, when we, when we consider these matters in, in September's committee of the holes.
And as you'll see when we go through the presentation, while the condition of the roads are not great, the circumstance isn't necessarily dire either. You know, we're going to be investing a considerable sum of money, over $5 million in the road system next year through our stormwater project, through the regular road program and through Central Avenue. So we're going to see a spike in the condition, which means we do have a little bit of time here to make some decisions. We don't necessarily have to solve the challenge in 2020. We have a little bit of flexibility on that, so that's something to keep in mind as we're trying to figure out what direction we want to go. So Ryan Kearney is our engineer who manages our pavement program. We hired Ryan a year ago from Mount Prospect. Prior to Mount Prospect, Ryan worked in the private sector and during that time he's managed 40 miles of road resurfacing construction. And to put that into perspective, we do less than two miles a year. So Ryan has a lot of experience in this. He's put together the bulk of this presentation and he's going to walk us through it. There's going to be a point in the middle where Bridget's going to jump in and address some issues and then I may kind of jump in from time to time too to add some context. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Ryan.
Perfect. Thank you for the introduction and thank you for the opportunity for us to present the current state of the roads for our village-owned non-brick streets as well as introduce some of the various funding scenarios that we've been looking at as a department. As it was discussed, these scenarios will be evaluated further in depth at the committee of the whole meetings in September. But at any point, if you guys need any clarification on the items discussed, feel free to stop us and ask away.
Ryan, you haven't presented in front of us before, but I'm a pretty good interrupter, so.
No problem.
Apologize in advance for that.
So the purpose of this presentation or the agenda, we're going to review the current roadway system and a little bit of the history as well as explain our process for determining our pavement conditions as well as our pavement maintenance strategy. We are going to review the current pavement conditions as of 2019 and then outline projections going forward in 2020 and beyond, both our current stat, status and moving on with some of these scenarios. So the village roadway system is one of the largest and the most valuable assets that we have in the village. The village maintains approximately 64 miles of non-brick streets made up of a majority of asphalt surfaces, over 47 miles, which represents about 73% of our streets. We also have asphalt overlays on some of our brick and concrete streets and then about five miles of our streets are concrete. So we do maintenance programs for all four categories. Many of the roads were built post-World War II development boom, but in 1998 to 2008, the village conducted a accelerated and accelerated street resurfacing program each year to get our overall pavement condition to a good status. But at the end of this accelerated program, the engineering division recommended reducing the annual funding from 3.1 million to two, which was intended to maintain the condition level. But due to the recession, the funding level was unable to meet that level on a regular basis.
And if I could just jump in here, I think that's an important point. Later on, we're going to be talking about accelerated road program options and issuing debt. One of the reasons we weren't able to meet that $2 million threshold was because we were paying the debt off. So if we're going to do an accelerated program, we need to pay off the debt and come up with the annual recurring revenue source, which was the challenge we had after 2008 and the same challenge we would have again if we were to do a large bond issuance to bring up the condition of our roads.
When you see that we'll talk about trying to get ourselves to 2027 when we have more funds available as the debt peels off, that's the debt. That's when the construction stopped was in '08 and that's why the debt peels off in 2027.
So how does engineering determine the pavement conditions? We utilize a software called Paver. It's an asset management tool that was developed by the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers and has been accepted by the American Public Works Association. It takes into, it calculates deficiency ratings based on visual inspections done on the pavement surface. Engineering will go out and inspect the entire roadway inventory on a three-year cycle. This is a little different than the previous cycle of every quarter. We want to make sure that this new cycle presents, we were able to go out and address the streets on a three-year program.
So this is, we had interns this summer, they did roughly a third or did they did more than a third?
Everything.
They did, that's right.
We did the entire inventory.
Yeah, that's right. That's what I thought. So this, we, we just had, we just did all of the roads though, but normally it's every, road gets looked at every three years is what you're saying is normal.
That is right. Before, we were going at about a quarter of the entire roadway inventory each year.
So four-year cycle and now it's three.
Exactly.
But we did do all of them this past summer.
Yes.
Okay.
Correct. And this, this new layout ensures that engineering doesn't miss any streets that deteriorate quicker due to traffic volumes or other needs that wouldn't be caught on a quarterly basis. And then these results are logged into Paver and after the interns have gone out and inspected these streets, the engineering staff will conduct a quality control check between the old data and the new data to make sure that there's anything that varies. We are able to go out and double-check that, which the interns did recheck and we did find that this year's ratings are pretty consistent with what they were finding. So that's a good sign. And then the software will assign a pavement condition indexed rating for each pavement section and this data is what we use to determine our road program as well as the locations for our maintenance programs. So we take that pavement condition rating and we assign it to a pavement condition category. This category system has slightly changed since the 2016 meeting. There was two major changes to this system. First, we balanced out the PCI ratings per condition to reflect what we would see with our aging pavement surfaces as well as being more in line with some of the industry standards. And the second major change was expanding upon the very poor and serious, are we splitting the very poor section into very poor and serious so that we're able to target the streets that, that are in dire need first.
So the changes to the categories are more in line with industry standard, but the, the comparability of the number, the PCI, PCI number?
Yeah.
Is the same? So it's not that the, that the measurement criteria changed, it's just that we broke them out into more categories. Is that right?
Well, so, and there was slightly a little bit of rebalancing. So we used to have a very good category, which did not, it only incorporated five PCI ratings, which wasn't a good...
Right, but, right. So you, yeah, you changed the categories, but a 56 was a 56 three years ago and a 65 was a 65 three years ago. It's not that a 65 in the old standards is a 62 in today's standards.
The, when we rebalanced the conditions to make it that each category had about a 15-point rating system in each, it did slightly expand on some of these other sections. So the, the payment rating numbers for fair actually went down, it had a couple more points lowered. So it's, instead of being, I believe fair before went to 60, now it goes to 56. But what this new...
Yeah, but that's, but that's not, my question is if a road, if a road is a 56, if I looked at the exact same condition two years ago, you still called it a 56.
Oh, correct, correct.
You might have called it, you might have called it fair now as opposed to whatever.
Correct.
But, but the 56 is still the 56.
Correct.
The way you calculate the PCI in a sense hasn't changed. The data points that are driving it.
The way we're analyzing the data has changed, but the, the data...
The data, right.
Yeah, okay.
The category changed, but not...
I told you, I interrupt a lot, sorry.
No, no, that's good. Thank you.
A question. So on our GIS map consortium online, is this the old data then? Or can you help me understand what this is relative to, to that?
Correct. So that map was updated with the quarterly inspection that was done in 2018. By the time of the September committee of the whole meetings, we will have that map updated with this new...
Those categories?
With those categories. So that you'll be able to get a better representation of the, the current streets in town to make our determinations on these scenarios.
Okay.
Another question, sorry.
No, that's fine.
So maybe I missed this. Is, are all of these terms industry standard? I know you said you, you broke up the very poor and serious. Where did the word serious come from?
So serious is one of the ones that's on the industry standards. Again, the standard that the Army Corps of Engineers uses as well as ASTM International. But we, as a village, are able to customize our conditions based on the situat, our condition ratings based on the scenarios that fit our town. So stuff that would maybe fit a highway network wouldn't necessarily match the same as what would, we would experience on a local street level. So this...
Let me, let me restate what you just said. A highway has to be maybe in better shape because there's higher speeds and so what would be considered serious, like on a highway, might be fair for us or poor or whatever. Like that's what you're saying, that, that while the categories are the same, you apply them depending on the road usage or the, the situation?
The main thing that the conditions, and we'll go forwards with this as we explain the pavement maintenance strategy as well, is we want to make sure that we're clearly identifying which, the PCI ratings are the same for pavement regardless. It's, it uses the same tool and whatever street the highway is, just...
Right, the number would be the same, but you might have a different interpretation of that number.
Right. So we customize in terms of the condition ratings so that we're more clear that which phase of maintenance or repairs need to be done at each category. That reflects our village. So just to, if we started with a street that had 100 PCI, going down each level represents approximately about five years for an asphalt street, for each individual street. So if you start, going back to that example, if you start with a brand-new resurfaced street, it would have 100 PCI rating. In about five years, you would see about an 86 to an 85. We assume a deterioration rate per street at about three PCI per year and that's pretty standard for our area. So basically, we want to make sure that we're saying that in five years, our streets will, after being resurfaced, they will be in good condition and then so forth, fair, poor. So then when we get streets that are about 20 to 25 years, they'll be in that poor to very poor condition, which is where we start targeting them for resurfacing. And we'll explain that further as we go through the presentation.
One last question. When you describe a street as serious, what does that mean? I, I think I understand excellent, good, fair, poor. I've seen those on my report cards. What does ser, what does serious mean in, in your world?
So we'll expand on this as we go forward ahead, but essentially, serious is meaning that maintenance items like pavement patching, crack sealing and some of the other programs we use are no longer effective and the street is in need of resurfacing or reconstruction depending on the, where it's at in serious. Most of our road program streets don't get to a point where we need to do reconstruction, but essentially the streets that are in the serious category after a paper analysis will be the first ones we go out to inspect when we determine our program to see, to get those resurfaced.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, I have one more question. I, I just want to follow up on President Balinski's question. So the PCI rating, it doesn't take into account traffic on that road. So for example, and the reason why I'm asking is if we had like a, I wouldn't consider the condition of a road like Wilmette Avenue that's traveled a lot. I'd be concerned about that condition being the same as, you know, for lack of a better word, Forest Avenue that, you know, because, because there's so much traffic. So I would think that the PCI rating would take into account as a data point, the traffic on that street and does it not?
So...
I think, go ahead.
No, so I just want to say that's why we go on a three-year cycle and why I was mentioning an average deterioration rate's about three, because when we reevaluate the streets every three years, streets that would get higher traffic would deteriorate quicker.
Okay.
That's what we would expect. So that's why we don't want to miss any streets.
But the PCI is a statement of the condition. I think what he was saying earlier is that the, the sort of interpretation of that condition, excellent, good, fair, poor, might vary depending on the circumstances and the use of a road. Now, does that mean that in Wilmette...
So you could have a, I'm sorry, so I under, you could have a 65, a PCI rating of 65 with a poor rating?
Well, that's, 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 my question is, is there one standard for Wilmette? You mentioned a highway, like, and you can understand why if a highway had potholes in it, you know, one pothole is a big deal on a highway. Are you using the same standard for all of Wilmette streets based on sort of in general or is it like Wilmette Ave or Skokie Boulevard has a higher threshold or whatever?
No, yes, this surface condition standard will be used on all of...
Okay, all right. So we've got like an average village of Wilmette-like interpretation. Okay, all right.
I think, can we, I don't mean to belabor this, but I think potholes is a completely separate issue. I mean, if you have a pothole, it gets fixed regardless of the street.
Yeah, that was just an...
Okay. No, but I mean, a pothole could be dangerous. We're not talking dangerous streets, we're just talking about streets that need to be resurfaced.
And we'll, we'll evaluate on the different pavement maintenance items that we do to maintain our overall average.
All right, let's move on because now we've got pictures. We've got pictures. We can look at the pictures.
Yes, we do have pictures. Yes. So I'm going to just go through the life of a street. I'd like to point out that these are just an example of each category. When the interns go out and inspect streets, they actually look for 20 different types of distresses at different variety of severity. So this is, each of these pictures is a good representation of each category, but it's not the only representation of each category. And again, the rating is based on a combination of these factors. So we'll start with an excellent street between the ratings of 186. Then you'll see it start transitioning to good where you'll start seeing some longitudinal cracking, you'll start seeing minor things, but not a major or any impact on the rideability. As we start going between fair and poor...
All right, so we back up one.
Sure.
Is that Iroquois? Like we can all have a little guessing game here if you want. That really looks like Iroquois because of the island there and the curve of the road between just east of Illinois. I'm, I'm, I am serious, but...
I'd have to look back at the pictures, yeah.
Sorry, I thought you may have taken them yourself, so...
No problem. But so this slide is a good representation of where we're at right now. So the fair condition highlights that, or I should say, both of these streets can still be managed by our pavement maintenance programs such as area patching and crack sealing. But the picture on the right, left, your left, fair condition is where there's still no impact on rideability, but once you start getting into the poor condition, rideability does become a factor. You'll see that some of the cracks start expanding. This is when you'll see potholes forming as the pavement continues to deteriorate at a point that, that needs additional maintenance items for it to get to its full service life. So right now, we are right in between these two pictures in terms of our condition. So again, rideability is still good and we still have time, as Mike mentioned, to develop our scenarios going forward before we, but once we start getting more into that poor condition category, that's when we'll start seeing more of those rideability factors.
I think this is a really important slide in the presentation because it gets at what we were saying earlier, that the situation's not dire yet. We, you know, we can, these road conditions are acceptable to the degree that we can drive comfortably on them. So if we can kind of stop the bleeding and stop the decline and at least maintain this and start to improve, this is a lot better than the next slide where we start getting into very poor and serious.
Right, but we, when we, and I think there's a histogram in here, my recollection. When we were looking at the stuff in 2016, we were focused on histograms as well, which was it's one thing to be average, but that doesn't mean, you know, all of our miles look like that. There's, you know, when a road gets fixed, it goes to 100, it's all the, it's all the twenties and thirties that you're worried about.
Exactly.
Because that's an ugly picture on the next page.
Yes. So once a street enters very poor condition, it becomes a can, or serious, it becomes a candidate for our resurfacing program. Obviously, the program is based on the funding we have and as well as some of the very poor conditions could be addressed by some pavement, pavement maintenance items. However, once you get into these categories, those items are usually no longer effective because streets like serious, you would end up patching the entire street. So at that point, it would become a resurfacing. So once a street gets too serious, until it is resurfaced, all we can do from a public works side is just continue to fill the potholes until that street would become a candidate for the program. So you'll see, as mentioned, there is a histogram later, so we, it will outline each of the percentages of payment by area in town and where they fall into each of these categories.
Question?
Mm-hmm.
I saw that some of those segments are quite long. When you, when you come up with these street segments, is that based on a segment that's uniform more or less in, in condition or do you just take a segment and then average the condition over that segment?
There's, there's a combination. So the segments were created on two factors. One, where we saw that the roads would want, would, should be resurfaced and the other factor was when those roads were constructed. So those segments are put into Paver. The rating is given based on the conditions over an average, based on inspecting certain sections within, certain areas within the section. But then the program will give a weighted average for the overall PCI of the village.
So you can have a street that's a segment that is called very poor and there might be a section of it that's serious, I take it?
Right, but that, and that, and that is why, once we get these condition ratings and we start developing our road program, we'll go check out the streets with the serious condition first to verify what limits would need to be resurfaced or addressed in a timely manner. If we see something that is shorter than the actual segment that's shown on the map, engineering would determine how we would make that maintenance repair.
But, and maybe you'll get to this because I think this is what we're, when I was listening to sort of the, you know, the serious and excellent. And I did the right, same thing too, get the list of all those streets that are serious and go and say, okay, let's, we have to address those. But I would think there are some streets that we got to make sure that they can't get worse than, now I'm forgetting the categories, fair or poor, good, because we have people traveling on them. If we, I mean, if we let Wilmette Avenue go to serious, it can't sustain the traffic.
Right.
So, I mean, do we get to a point where we just don't, do you have a list of roads that say, okay, this is the bare minimum we can be and we got to do something? Does that make sense what I'm asking?
No, yeah.
Yes.
Will you have that in September?
Do you have different standards depending on the use?
Because I think that's what you're getting at. A highway can never get to less than good.
Yeah, it's a trustee Sullivan's point. The, the engineering team is already working on a grant application for Wilmette Avenue, West of Green Bay Road. While it's not in the, I don't, is it fair right now? I'm not sure what category it's in. We're not going to let it get to that very poor. So they're being proactive on those heavier traffic roads while, you know, maybe some of those side streets can handle going to serious while we fix those. So it's a balancing act to prioritize.
And mentioned before with the traffic pattern, like it's streets that get more traffic, they will deteriorate quicker, so they would come up on the program a lot sooner before it even, we would see the deterioration rate go down to a point where we would come and address it sooner.
But I guess piggybacking on trustee Sullivan's point, and maybe this is something for you guys to be helping us with when, in our next meeting, which is, I think as we, you know, we're not going to be looking at each serious street and so, but I think what we're going to be really concerned about is serious streets and possibly very poor streets that are very high-traveled because that's going to be, that's going to help us decide how much money we might think we have to spend because those streets do have safety issues resulting in... safety issues resulting in them, as opposed to a very poor-conditioned street that is less tra, you know, so one where people are dropping off kids for school or whatever, you know, I mean, we don't have that many really high-traveled roads, but, you know, Lake and Wilmette and Ridge and, I don't know, Skokie and, you know, I don't know, Sheridan and Glenview or whatever. And so, if any of those were in serious or poor condition, I would think those would be, we'd have to know about those so that we can make sure that at a minimum, we're addressing those in whatever budgeting decisions we make over the next year or two.
We can address that at the next meeting.
Just a quick one. So, is this system and data used by other communities as well? Is this a widespread?
Similar, some, I, it, the, each community has, can adjust that rating system for how they want to address their pavement maintenance programs. This is one similar that I've used in the past, and it is pretty close in line, again, with what we've used in the past. The biggest thing from that condition rating was just making sure we clearly identify what sections of streets are serious condition and very poor, because before, those categories were combined.
But, but, but I think trustee Kersman's question is the Paver, the Paver system.
Yes.
Is a widespread, widely used, like, so the number that the Paver system generates, lots of people are using that. What they do with it may be different, and how they categorize it may be different, but like, a forty is a forty and a fifty is a fifty, no matter where you are in general? Is that an accurate statement?
Yeah, I mean, the, the tool is used throughout, the tool was actually developed, I believe, by Colorado State University, so it's a, it's a national tool. And we also have a, there's two payment rating systems that are widely used, and this is in the iDOT Payment Maintenance Manual. The first one's Pacer, which is a little more, I guess, generics. It's not as detailed as what this, the Paver program presents. This is a little more, what's the best way to say it, detailed.
Robust?
Yes.
So, I guess we're, and thank you, President Balinski, that was, that was helpful. I mean, in subsequent slides, when we look at PCA rating, PCI rating, and what our average is, I'm just curious whether there would be other data points from other communities to know how we compare, just as one consideration. I know that's, we got to take care of ours, our streets and our residents certainly, but I'm just curious whether that would at all be.
And would that data be comparable?
Yeah, yeah.
That's, that's the question, right? Like, is it apples to apples if we say, when ETC says their streets are sixty and Evanston says their streets are fifty and Glenview says their streets are fifty-five, is, are those all comparable numbers to our number?
We, we can reach out in future stages to see what kind of system they're using. If they're using Paver, those numbers should be pretty comparable, but again, because again, the, the system itself will calculate it based on similar calculations that other communities would use, but we would have to verify that.
Yeah, and there's judgment in terms of, you know, an engineer looks at the road and says this is a seventy-five and, you know.
And that, that is one of the reasons why we go through and do a quality control afterwards, because it is all subjective in terms of the visual inspections. However, the actual calculations themselves are similar.
Yeah, that would be interesting, and also, I mean, if, while you're asking, trends are interest, sometimes more interesting than the nominal numbers, you know, like, are people's numbers going up or are they going down?
Hope they don't ask about ours.
Pardon?
Hope they don't ask about ours, I'm just kidding.
Well, there's that perception that we're substandard, so I'm just kind of curious, is, is that true?
Yeah. So, just to evaluate a little further on our payment maintenance strategy, there's five components that the engineering department employs. The first is pavement rejuvenation, which is a newer program. We had trials in sixteen, seventeen, and eighteen of variety size, and now it's become a full program. We use crack sealing, it's a routine program that we've implemented in the past. Area patching is a new individual program that we have just started as of today, based on the award of $200,000 that was approved at the Village Board meeting in May. But in the past, area patching was done through the road program where we used savings that were not used as part of the streets that were determined to be resurfaced at that time. This maintenance strategy is followed by resurfacing and reconstruction.
So, brief overview.
Each pavement rejuvenation is a preventive maintenance program. It's typically applied to the surface of the street one to two years after paving, and the streets that we target will be in excellent condition. This is a one-time application unlike seal coating, and it, the purpose is to restore the flexibility in the asphalt pavement that is lost during oxidation, and this is done by applying a malteen-based product to the surface of the pavement. This product will decrease, will lead to decreased deterioration rate of the asphalt surface. So, this is kind of the first step we take in our maintenance strategy, and again, the purpose of all these programs is to help reach a service life of each street until, and it would, they'll each affect the overall payment condition rating.
Could I ask a question?
Yes.
When you use the term typically applied, are you referring to what we typically do or are you talking about the industry generally?
Yes, to both. So, yes, we will be focusing on streets that were resurfaced one to two years ago, and this is industry standard. And it is intended to be a one-time coating. Some communities do more coatings, but the industry standard is just one coating.
And I think it's helpful to point out that this program and our street patching, you know, we understand that we've been struggling to fund our road program, but the Village Board has allocated additional dollars to our maintenance programs that we hadn't had in previous years, which is helping. So, you know, while we're struggling to hit that $2 million or $2 million-plus threshold, we are allocating funds to help with our maintenance programs.
Is this the second or third year we're doing the rejuvenation?
This is the first year as a full program, but we've been, we did, I believe.
We did samples of it for the last, the idea is just to upfront extend the life of the streets that we've done, just to maximize their, their lifespan?
What is it, how costly?
It's, this year's program was about $16,000.
And for, how much?
And we did, I believe, we, we did about five streets that were resurfaced last year, off the top of my head.
One block, five blocks? Total mile?
They were a variety of blocks. The square yardage, I'll have to look back. I'll, I'll have that number after the September committee hole meeting, off the top of my head.
Why wouldn't you do it? You said, we do it one year, is there really no benefit to do it five years after? I mean, is there multiple times or why wouldn't we do it?
So, the main purpose of this application is to keep the surface as it is while, when it was applied, so if you do it five years later and the cracks start forming, it's just going to keep those cracks longer. So, that's why you want to apply this right away while the surface is still tight, so that it'll maintain that tightness before you start seeing a lot of the surface cracking.
No, I get that. So, you do, you said we do it one time, but you said other communities do it multiple times. Why don't we do it multiple times?
The benefit for local roads, for local streets, we just see it as a factor for one time. We believe some of the other pavement maintenance items at that point will be better suited for the, what the conditions we get.
Is this program something that we can afford to do for every street that has been resurfaced?
So, our, our goal is to make sure, it's kind of nice that we can plan out this ahead, because whatever we do in the road program this year, we will know then the square yardage for next year. In terms of the priority of the streets, again, we could apply it two years after, so if we couldn't fund it one year, we could hold off a year. Obviously, we'd have to do more streets the next year to stay within that one to two-year window.
But the goal is to, as we.
The goal is.
Resurface a street to have it within the next year, twelve to twenty-four months, they should, anything we've resurfaced should get this treatment.
We should do it, is what I guess, let me rephrase the question.
This is something we should.
This is not optional.
This is something we should.
For it to be, to optimize it to the best capacity, it would be to do it the year after.
Now, in terms of, you know, we're looking at the budget down the road, if this is a new program that we're doing, have we seen how much longer our streets are lasting because of this and how much money we can save?
So, we have examples from other communities where you can see the impact. We're still, because we haven't had this program for a long time, we're still monitoring the streets that we've done the sampling on, so we will have clear examples as the streets deteriorate. So, locally, it's too early in the process to visibly see the changes. However, like I mentioned, surrounding communities have examples that we can show over longer periods of time where it's pretty substantial.
Should, I mean, shouldn't we be able to tell? If you said it earlier, you said they deteriorate about three PCI a year if gone from a hundred, shouldn't they stay in the excellent category for longer period of time if we do this one year? I mean, shouldn't I slow down that three-year average of decline?
Right, and we'll, yeah, and, and we will be able to, so regardless of, regardless of applying or not, like, it was, within this current period that we have done it in three years, it's still within the excellent category, and obviously, the, the deterioration rate of three is an average, so some streets will be lower than that, some streets will be higher.
And this is a very, this is a very small percentage of streets now, in terms of, you know, the ones that were just resurfaced, so it's not going to move that needle.
Correct, no, it's, once we get, when we're getting closer, like, seven to ten years is when you'll start seeing a more significant impact of what this product is doing on those streets.
Okay, let's keep, let's move along.
Perfect.
This isn't the last item on the agenda, guys, there's one more.
Crack sealing is our routine maintenance. It's typically applied three to five years after paving asphalt streets. The streets that we target are those in the good-conditioned category. The purpose is to seal the cracks that have developed or expanded in the asphalt surface, and by sealing them, we prevent moisture from reaching the base, which can increase the rate of deterioration. We want to target going, making sure that we target this three to five-year window, because if we allow those cracks to expand, that would require more crack sealing, and then you start getting, you start seeing those puzzled effects. So, by implementing this maintenance strategy, we should start crack sealing some of these streets at a sooner point so that those cracks don't expand. Asphalt patching is another preventive maintenance item. It's typically constructed about five to ten years after paving asphalt surfaces. The duration's longer for a concrete surface, but the streets, regardless of surface types, the streets that we target are those in fair or poor condition. The purpose of these patches is to improve the service life of the pavement until it is, until the entire street reaches its intended service life, and these patches do improve the overall condition of the pavement. So, as mentioned earlier, unlike pothole filling, which we, public works crews do to resolve and, or address an immediate hazard that's in the street, a, we, we have a contractor and we actually have in-house capabilities for smaller patches to actually remove the sections of the deteriorated pavement and pave new asphalt in order for us to, to stop the spread of the deterioration. So, by doing, targeting areas such as the one in the picture, if, if left unattended or if continuously potholed, filled with cold-mixed asphalt on an annual basis, the deterioration around it would continue to spread and lead to an overall lower rating for that street.
So, then, area patching is more extensive than simply pothole filling?
Right, yes. Pothole filling, typical lifespan is about a year. And again, we want to make sure if there's, if there is a hazard in the street that we are able to address it. It's, it uses a material called, or cold-mixed asphalt, which is easy to handle, easy to fill, but comes out. The asphalt patches, it uses hot-mixed asphalt, which is similar to what we do with our street resurfacing, and that patch has a typical service life of about ten years, depending, again, on traffic and other conditions.
We're doing the area patching this week?
Right now.
Correct, it started Monday, we, we started it at the Loyola area. We, we will be back on Laramie later this week, outside of school hours, and the, we did Dartmouth today, too, and then we're going to continue our way through the village. The contractor expects to get it done this week or early next week.
So, we'll have some before and after pictures to show the board at our September sixteenth committee of the whole, so you could see the impact that it has. Now, we're doing $200,000 in patching this year, which is a significant amount of money that's coming out of the general fund reserve. That increases the PCI by one. So, while it doesn't seem like a lot, it actually has a significant impact on the daily users of the roads that are being patched, so it really does have a big impact, and the dollars are going a long ways. It just doesn't move that PCI significantly.
Not per road, though, just?
Overall.
Overall, overall.
So, each, the road PCI might.
Correct. The individual road PCI will go up, and so, when we had the quality control check, we also had the interns redo streets that were getting patching, so the, so all the streets that will receive patches this year, the condition ratings that will be on the map at the September meeting will reflect that patching has been done on those streets. And that's how we were able to determine that the $200,000 that was spent this year had the overall increase of one, which, based on our condition scale, is the difference between having our streets in the poor condition and our streets in the fair condition. So, it, it is a factor, and that's why it is crucial that all of these payment maintenance steps are, we do some form of them. Then we move on to street resurfacing, which, which is the maintenance item where we start doing more of a structural improvement. For asphalt streets, we resurface them typically on a twenty to twenty-five-year lifecycle. It's about, if we were to overlay a concrete street, it'd be in about fifty years for that service life, and the streets that we would target would be those in very poor to serious condition. And the purpose of resurfacing the street is to renew the service life of the pavement surface and, which would have, which has a significant impact on the overall payment condition rating.
It goes to a hundred, right?
It goes right to a hundred, correct. But then, to the question before about the serious category, we do have, reconstruction is the final stage of a pavement life. This is where there is base damage that has to be rehabilitated, the base stone of the street. So, reconstruction typically occurs three to four, after three to four resurfacing, or about fifty to a hundred years after pouring concrete. The streets in this category are typically, are always in serious condition, but the inverse serious doesn't always need to be reconstructed.
Are there streets that you've identified that, that you would recommend reconstruction rather than resurfacing?
We're, we're still analyzing the rest of the results that we done from the inspection, but we are, based on the initial review, we are not anticipating any reconstructions.
Was, was locust or central?
Yes.
Reconstructions?
So, the other category, if it doesn't meet the three to four resurfacings or the fifteen, hundred years for concrete, is if we do major underground work, typically, we would want to reconstruct those. So, locust, Central Avenue, and parts of Phase One will be reconstructed.
There, there are some streets I know in the village that are primarily concrete, but then they have some section, like, sort of seems to be randomly in there that it's asphalt. Is there any advantage to converting the whole street to concrete?
There's advantages for both asphalt or concrete. Concrete provides, has a longer service life. However, the, some of the downfalls are that it is more expensive to maintain, more expensive to install, and has a higher noise volume from traffic. Asphalt streets are a little more easier to maintain and resurface.
Well, I guess, I guess what I meant was, is, is there, is there an advantage to using a single material on a street to, for longevity purposes, or is it okay to have streets that are sort of a checkerboard of different materials?
Yeah, it's, in terms of the rideability or in terms of the actual payment of a section, it won't have that major of an impact, it's more of just whether, when the streets come up in need of replacement, do we go back to that checkerboard pattern, or do we do all concrete, or do we do all asphalt? And in terms of our pavement sections, I don't believe we have combinations in any of them, so.
We do, we definitely do.
Alright.
You know what, I do want to go back to the, so, just so I understand, because I was looking at some studies, so, concrete streets are more expensive to put in, but do they last longer? And have we done any, and I guess I didn't hear, didn't read about that, that they're noisier. I'm just wondering if there, if we've looked at, over the long term, would it be better for some of our more heavily-traffic streets to do concrete instead of asphalt, or have we just decided it's just not a good, environmentally? I mean, I know concrete's not as environmentally good as asphalt or whatever, but there's some, if you read some, you know, lots of people are talking about roads, and then one thing that keeps coming up is part of why the roads are going so, are so poor in the United States in general is because we moved from ass, concrete to asphalt, and I'm just wondering if we should be looking at that for our village? Or if that's true, if you agree with that, even that statement?
I think, I think we're done to put that section, right?
Yes, we are. Oh, perfect.
Trustee Kennedy, to answer your question, we would not intentionally put two different construction materials on a street. So, if there's a street that has concrete and asphalt, chances are, a portion of the concrete has failed and we just didn't have the ability, we don't do concrete in-house, we rarely do, we don't have a lot of concrete streets, so we don't have a lot of concrete contractors in town who would fix it. So, the asphalt might be a temp- So the asphalt might be a temporary measure, but maybe you can, you and I can talk offline and figure out what's going on with that. But we would never intentionally have mixed materials on a street. As far as concrete versus asphalt versus brick, there's really not a one-size-fits-all. It's very, depending on, on the street. For example, Sheridan Road is a composite pavement. We have a concrete base and then we have asphalt on top of it as a riding surface. So the concrete gives it the strength and the asphalt has the benefit of, you know, everything asphalt can provide. But asphalt in general is a very imperfect material. I mean, we know that it, it has issues with it and it requires constant maintenance. If there were a better product out there and I could design it, I wouldn't be here right now. There's a lot of money to be made if we could figure that out, but.
Asphalt's significantly less than concrete.
It is, it's less expensive.
That's the upside.
But how much, given how much money we're spending?
Well, I think that's what, I mean, that's a good question. Maybe some analysis will show.
There's a lot of maintenance concerns with, with concrete as well. With all the utility cuts that we have, it's very difficult to cut into concrete. Our staff would have a difficult time fixing water main breaks under concrete streets. Whereas asphalt's much more forgiving for that type of maintenance work. So in, in order to kind of plan where we go, looking, looking forward, where we go from here, I have to take you back a couple of years. This slide came out of a 2016 committee of the whole meeting. And at the time, when the village board looked at various scenarios on what was the appropriate funding level and what was the appropriate PCI moving ahead, this is the scenario that the board selected. So basically, back in 2016, our overall PCI condition rating was a 68. And we wanted to maintain that 65 to 68 rating moving forward. Up to the point that in 2027, as we mentioned previously, we'd be able to use some retired debt proceeds for the road program. So the projection at the time was if we spent $2 million a year for the next 10 years, our 68 would steadily decline to 65, which is still in a fair, mid-fair condition. And then if we continued that out 20 years and utilized that debt, retired debt in 2027, then we'd start climbing back up into the 67, 68 category.
Right, so the village board at that time, our expectation was that if we spent $2 million a year, we'd be, I mean, this was only two or three years ago, so we would be at 67 or 66 at worst. And so obviously, where we are today is much lower and there's a conversation around that. But the expectation was that this plan was going to sort of basically hold the condition flat. We weren't going to see serious deterioration in the condition because I think that was the board. I mean, Trustee Sullivan and Trustee Plunkett were there for those meetings. And I think that was the perspective on the board is that we, we don't want it to get much worse. And then when the funds that were paying debt or are paying debt today, when that debt's retired, those funds could then be brought into the road program and you would actually see a steady improvement as well. That's not where we are today, but I, it's important for context to know that's what we thought two years ago when we made the decision to increase funding by 500,000 to get us to $2 million. So that's consistent with.
Yeah, absolutely. And, and again, with asset management, we are looking at trends. And here's, here's our trend from 2011 up to 2019 where we are today. And I, I think it's important to note right here, we had a large influx of funds into the road program through a bond issue between 1998 and 2008. It was a multimillion dollar program. And so at the end of 2008, now this is three year late, three years later in 2011, but at that time, we know, knew we needed $2 million a year to maintain that high level of service for our roads. And in 2011, we were still at a 76, which is extremely great for our roads and probably unrealistic at this point. But we were at 76 and then you can see the steady decline. As we weren't able to keep up with those $2 million targets, we started to decline to a 56 where we are today.
Yeah, and I'll, I'll save my comments as another slide that is a better comment on that. But part of that was the recession in terms of, you know, revenues plummeted. And the decision, and I was, I wasn't on the board back then, but the decision that was made back then was to, you know, temporarily pare back the road program and other capital expenditures. I will say that when we met in 2014, we talked about 2016's increase in revenue. When we met in 2014 to talk about increasing spending on engineering programs, we were well beyond not funding the road program sufficiently. We weren't, weren't funding the overall engineering program sufficiently. And it was also sort of the board's realization at that point was we were out of the recession. Okay, there wasn't like, oh, don't worry, revenue is going to go up here. And we were already out of the recession. So there was sort of a realistic perspective on our part that this isn't going to fix itself. And in 2014, when you'll see later, in 2014, when the sales tax was increased, that was a million and a half dollars that went into the engineering program. Not much of that went into the road, per se, the road program. But sidewalks and alleys, we did a lot of alley work. And like striping and all these things had just been sort of, oh, we can wait another year. It was finally to the point where the village board said, what are we waiting for? You know, we're, we're three years out of the recession now. It's not like all of a sudden, sales tax is going to go up by 20% or, you know, the, you know, real estate transfer tax was going to pop back or income tax was going to pop back. It already popped back, but not to the levels that they used to be. There was, anybody who's really interested is probably still on the village website. There was a big state of the village presentation, was really more like a financial overview. And I gave the presentation to at least three or four different groups, including a big group at the Wilmette Theater. And then we recorded it and it's online still. But it sort of walked through what had happened through the recession and why we needed that big of an influx of funds. So more background for those of you who weren't, I guess I'm the only person who was here in 2014, so.
Here's the distribution of our pavement conditions. 48% of our roads are in fair or better condition and 52% are in poor or worse condition. If we were to take all the roads in serious condition and resurface them in one year, the price take on that is about $9.2 million. And it would give us a boost of our PCI to 67.
And 56 is our number right now?
56 is where we're at now, correct.
Bridgette, do we, so back in 2016, when, I mean, that seemed like a very significant increase at the time. It took a lot of meetings. What was it, what is it exactly that did not keep that program stable? Is it pricing? Is it weather? Is it, you know, what can we?
Perfect, perfect.
You have one, yeah, we've got one, a couple ahead, right?
I think that there's a lot of factors. The number one factor in my mind though is just the dollars spent have not been close to where they need to be. And this is certainly true between 2012 and 2015. You can see in 2016, we're starting to get up to a million, I'm sorry, this, this chart right here has, has three rows. It talks about our budget request at the top row. The middle row is the budget that was actually approved by the board. And then the bottom row, which is the most significant, is actual shovel in the ground, dollars spent on construction. So you can see, you know, in the early years in 2012, 13, 14, we're, you know, a million or less than a million. And then in the last three years, 16, 17, 18, at least we're up over a million, but we're not close to the 2 million target. And, and one of the reasons that is, it's, it's a little bit of a perfect storm. Right during this time period, we had all these federal projects that came in, Locust Road and Central Avenue. And those siphoned a lot of local funds out of the road program. We don't have a separate funding source for that. So we pay a 30% share on the construction. We have to fund the Phase One engineering out of pocket. And then we also pay 30% of the design and the construction engineering. So the good news is we're getting a lot of federal money. But the bad news is there is, it pays, takes a toll on our local funding as well.
Right, and as we discuss, I mean, that's something we may want to talk about when we have these unique projects. And by the way, Locust and Central were reconstructions. So the cost per foot is a lot higher. So you're not getting as much bang for your buck as you might be getting doing an asphalt resurfacing because it costs more. But the federal government's paying a lot of money here. But that's something we may want to think about, that when we have these federal projects, we need to think about what the impact of it is on the road program as a whole and figure out where that money comes from and what the impact is. And I'm not sure we did that as well as we, we potentially could have, understanding. And that's not the only thing. You know, two years of, of a million dollars, you know, being light a million dollars doesn't take the pavement down as far as it happened. There's, there are other factors too. And Trustee Plunkett, you mentioned one of them, weather.
Just as a point of reference, I, I looked at the state of, the Illinois State Climatologist website. The last three years have been very average winters, including last year's despite that polar vortex, the overall temperature.
But that's actually, that, my understanding is it's that freeze and thaw cycle that's actually the worst part.
Well, I, can we get data on whether the weather's really, because I don't want to be blaming something that isn't at fault and therefore thinking that we don't have another problem to solve. I would like to know what the real problem is so that we address that and not have some problems.
But remember the, the, when you look at all these charts, you can see sort of a steady decline on 2 million.
Yes.
We had a drop.
We did.
And that's part of the, that's part of the reason, it's not all of the reason, but that's part of the reason.
Like, I guess that's what I'd like to know is what is, what caused that? Is it because the roads got to a certain point where deterioration occurs faster?
Yeah, that's true.
And there's a slide on it too.
Yeah.
Absolutely. As, as you start, water is roads' worst enemy. Once you start getting cracks and you get water into the pavement, you see pretty rapid decline. And freeze-thaw cycles, as President Blonsky mentioned, are also, again, traps that water contracts the pavement and then when it melts, creates potholes. And so that, and I wouldn't say that that's the majority of the decline, it's just a part of the picture. Another small part that it is significant is our snow and ice control and the fact that we don't throw salt like we used to. We used to put down as much salt as we could and burn the snow off so we wouldn't have to drop our plows. We can't do that anymore. In fact, our first strategy is to put brine down to help the melting process. But then at an inch, we start putting our plows down because we don't want to, one, from a regulatory standpoint, we can't use as much salt as we used to. But from an environmental perspective, plowing is better than salting. So that also creates some, you know, friction in, you know, some of the areas on, I know Forest in particular, where you have that, all that sand mix, that stuff just tears right up when we put our plows down. So all these things, I think.
When, and when was that change made?
Oh, just the last couple of years.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Is salt bad for asphalt? Is salt bad for the streets too, or does that play a factor?
It's, it's worse for the sewers that take the salt away and it ends up in the river space.
Like the deterioration of the water?
Yeah, I don't, it would have to sit there for a long time.
Can you explain also that, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I was going to say, so should it be our expectation that the streets don't decline? You know, if you don't put any money in the streets, they're not going to decline three points a year anymore. Maybe it's five points a year or six points a year.
Yeah.
Which means to offset the way we changed our plowing, we got to spend more money on the roads. Or the condition's going to.
And catch them sooner before they develop as many cracks. Because once they do, that's when they start to decline more steadily.
What did you mean when you just said on Forest Avenue, the sand?
The, the.
My question's going to be, maybe I was going, should we be sanding our streets? I know some communities sand their streets versus salting their streets. Is that an option or is that?
No, this, this, this is sand mix. These, those like bubbles of asphalt that are on top of the potholes.
On the serious, yeah.
Yeah, and Public Works is also changing the way that we do this. This admittedly is terrible. And we finally, we can't do the big patching jobs, but we have a nice sized grinder now and we can cut those areas out and make nice square edges and grind them out and put continuous asphalt on. So hopefully, the days of this are going to be fewer and fewer, but that's the sand mix.
Go ahead.
I have two questions. So this decision to kind of plow more, was that our decision or was it dictated by regulations? And I just wonder, that'd be my first question.
Yeah, it, it is a regulation that came down through, I think it's the Illinois Department of Public Health. Came through down with a, basically an order that says all municipalities tributary to certain waterways have to reduce their salt because there are studies that show that the salt, excess salt, especially in the winter, is causing harm to the environment. So we have, we've hired an attorney who's representing Wilmette and we filed a variance that says we can't possibly comply with that low standard. And in order, what the, the variance says though is that we'll put in place all these best management practices to do whatever we can to reduce our salt.
We're actually sharing the attorney with a host of other towns to try and reduce costs. But that's exactly where, we're obligated by the state to reduce the chloride loading that goes into the storm sewers because they discharge directly into the Chicago River. And that's a new source of pollution they're preparing to regulate. And unfortunately, sand isn't, you see sand used a lot out west in an areas where they don't have storm sewers. Because otherwise, the sand doesn't drain off, it simply gets pushed into the sewers and then the sewers are filled with sand.
And I apologize, it's not the Department of Public Health, they're the lead services. Pollution Control Board, yeah.
So, so they're not really telling you, you can't, you have to plow more. They're simply saying you can't use salt to control the snow. And our decision was to plow more to make up for the.
We have to, we have to.
There's no other alternative.
Yeah, we have no other choice. For public safety purposes.
So my second question was just, when we, when the board in 2016 made the decision to increase the funding to $2 million a year for roads, just refresh my memory of where, where'd that $2 million come from? Like how much, just?
We raised the property tax by $500,000 a year.
Okay, and then, so that's 500,000?
It was like a million and a half before, wasn't it?
Some of it was, it was property tax, it was increasing the local fuel tax.
Correct.
And, and a portion of it was through expense savings with some retirements and positions that weren't filled. But going back before that, we added over $300,000 to the road program when we increased the home roll sales tax. So it's really been an extra $800,000 to the road program since 2014 through various means.
Right.
But not all roads, brick streets, alleys and all these.
The 800,000 all went to roads. Then the other portion of the home roll sales tax went to brick streets and alleys.
But the, so the, the increase in the property tax of the 500,000, the increase, the local fuel tax or whatever, were those ongoing revenue sources such that it would be $2 million a year?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep. And as was the sales tax in 2014, that was a million and a half a year that was generated by that. And 300 went to roads, the road program. But the other million two was all engineering and capital expenditures.
But we're getting that?
Every year.
Every year.
Yep.
Does the local fuel tax materialize as we expected?
It's not performing as well as we'd expected it to.
The difference though in what we allocated and what was spent, I mean, that money has been spent, right? Is that, are you saying that the federal grant programs have taken that? So the money has gone to roads, but not necessarily the.
The actual construction work.
Right.
And a lot of it's to the engineering associated with Locust and the Central, Skokie and Hibbert. And this slide is a little bit misleading unintentionally. We're going to clean it up for our next meeting. But for example, the 2014 program, we spent more than $848,000 on our road program overall. But that was on Skokie and Hibbert and Locust Road Engineering because we changed how we did our cash flows in later years. So we're going to clean this up. But we spent, you know, more on the road program, but the actual construction dollars spent are really the point we're trying to make here and those are, those are accurate. So we'll, we'll clean this up for the next presentation. But I think to the point Bridgette's making is the most significant reason our condition has been declining is because of the large federal projects that have diverted dollars from construction to engineering.
But, but a million doll, if we spent a million dollars a year, I mean, the, so from 2016 to today, that's call it two and a half years for, you know, it would be three years in, in the fall. So we went from 68 to 56, so that's 12 points. If you invested nothing in your roads, we would expect three points, you guys said. So zero expenditures would only take us down nine. We've got the other issues of weather, plowing. And so with a million dollars, I mean, it, maybe that's half of it, you know? But it just doesn't seem like the math works for it to be more than half of it. The fact that we were spending a million and still the condition dropped 12 points. That's, you following me? Does that make any sense?
I do, I, I follow you. I do, I follow you. I can tell you perhaps some of it is the recalibration of the entire system this year as well.
Okay.
That we're at a little bit of a new starting place. And again, I think we should focus on the trends.
Oh, I agree. And I agree, and the future.
Right.
You know, how we got here, we, there were a number of decisions that were made going all the way back to, say, 2007 and '08 when the recession started. And, you know, we made some decisions to increase spending in '14, we made some decisions to increase spending in '16, we may be making another decision to increase spending because really, how we got here is important, but where we're going is what this board is going to decide.
But I think it's really important to talk about, if, you know, if we're trying to get to a target, if we're trying to get to a target, we should know, and we were trying to keep targets, so I, I mean, I think it's, maybe we have a new baseline, but then maybe our target needs to change, but I think it's something we should be very careful of understanding why the decline happens such, because if we're going to look for an increase, we're going to want to make sure we're managing toward that. So I think a 12-point decline is...
That our, that our future assumptions are consistent with our recent past.
Exactly, right.
Is another way, I think, of what you're saying. Yeah.
So continuing the discussion of trends, we were looking in the rearview mirror, this is looking forward. If we start at our PCI at 56 and continue to invest $2 million a year for, from 2021 and beyond, unfortunately, that trend continues to decline over the next 10 years and we end up in the 53 category. Notice that between 2019 and 2020, we have a little bit of a bump from 56 to 59. That's as a result of the Central Avenue project and we're doing two additional miles of work because of the neighborhood storage project. So that's giving us some, some nice mileage there.
All right. So the bad news is if a new sewer is going down on your street, your road's going to be torn up. But the good news is you're going to have a brand-new road when we're done.
And Trustee, to add to your question earlier, that did assume the optimized sewers, so the two miles could come down if we don't do the optimized sewers.
Assuming the optimized.
Keep in mind, though, this is also just projecting $2 million annually and since the graph goes beyond 2027, when we would expect to have our debt service be relieved, there should be, that hasn't been factored into this yet, so you should start to see a bounce toward the tail end of the graph.
Right, but the, but if you look at, I mean, the trend is very comparable, Bridget, if you go back to that slide, the trend is very comparable to what we thought was going to happen when we were at 65. The difference is we're at 56 and so, you know.
Still in the fair category, we're just at the bottom of the fair category.
Right, but it's a different, it's a little bit different conversation here versus our conversation when we were at 68 and trying to stay at 65 so we could spend a certain level to stay there. The question here is, will become, or as we're talking about, is we thought 65 was pretty good, we were okay with that. Are we okay with 59? I don't know. That's, that will be the policy decision that we make as a board.
Well, it appears that, that the deterioration was much quicker.
Yeah, absolutely.
Than presumably anybody anticipated. Was that, do we think that's somehow due to the materials that were used or do we blame this all on the winter or back to the plowing?
I wish I could crystallize this for you and I think it's just a combination of things. There is very, very heavy quality control on our road projects because we use motor fuel tax funds. So there's a process in place to test all the material in the plants as it's being laid down. So it's not a performance issue, it's not a quality control issue. I really believe that it's a function of, once your roads are, start to crack and you start to introduce moisture, that they do rapidly deteriorate. And I think that we saw that in the last couple of years.
Well, that might be interesting data for us to look at. We can all play amateur engineer here and see if you do see any, you know, look, we just redid the whole village and is there any sort of learning that we can get from the delta from where we were last time we checked the street versus, say, two times ago where, okay, this went down, you know, in three years, this went down nine or six or whatever, but it's 12 now and, and is there anything, you know, you've always talked about how much more expensive it is, but are we seeing now, and maybe the plowing is exacerbating, you get to a certain point and, and the slope of the degradation curve changes, which I think is what you're suggesting, Peter, might be the case and what you said we should, you know, we should make sure, we understand as much as we can, so whatever our projection is reflects those assumptions.
I'm able to offer very few pieces of good news during this discussion, but the good news here is that we have not hit that steep decline and the road problems that we have are very much on the surface. So we can still grind and overlay, we're not in the reconstruction category in general, there may be a few exceptions to that. So that's a good starting place, really, in our rehabilitation strategy.
This is a really weird idea, but I just was, should we be looking at, in addition to, we're talking a lot about the winters and the plowing and stuff like that because that's what we think is what's deteriorating in the roads significantly is the...
And spending.
What's that?
And spending.
And spending, I know, but, and so I'm just wondering if we, if it would, if we could look at, like, should we be using different plows on different streets and is that something we might want to explore? And maybe that would cost us more to buy different plow vehicles because we don't, we can't reuse the, but maybe the only, the big ones go only on the big streets and the small, I just wonder if that's something we could be exploring as another alternative, it's got a higher upfront capital cost, but...
I don't think there's anything magical about the plows, but I do think that the Village Board has supported our investment in these larger tanks that we put on our snowplow trucks for brining our arterial streets. And salt brine is extremely effective in causing, you know, as soon as the snow hits it, it starts that early melt, so it delays the time that we do have to come in and plow. So that's a relatively new program. We'll have our salt brine maker up and running this winter season. So this winter will be really telling in how, one, how much salt, what our reduction in salt is, but hopefully we won't have to plow as much because we'll let the brine do the work for us.
I'm grasping for some good news here. Is there any chance that, that the stormwater program, which will have less street flooding, will be beneficial in terms of the deterioration of the streets?
Well, perhaps. I think it's really just your average everyday rains, though, that fall on the pavement and get into the cracks. I think the duration that it's there is probably not as much a factor.
Okay. So in terms of this projection, I feel like this has been based on, you know, historical models or, you know, what has happened in the past. And it sounds like that we're doing new things that could prolong the life of the roads, like the rejuvenation and the patching and the salt brine. Could those things actually affect this projection? I mean, could that be something that now in the newer streets, they, they last longer and so maybe these projections won't go as low as this model?
I think, Trustee Plunkett, you're going to see the benefits of those maintenance programs probably 10 to 15 years outside of this chart.
Okay.
But right now, this is a function of the serious and very poor streets that we have, they're, they're just going to continue to get worse.
Right, and there's a limited amount of streets that are going to get the rejuvenation, for example, it's just the new ones. So it'll be a long time before there are like half of the road to whatever.
But eventually.
Yeah.
Central Avenue, is that 2.8 million, is that some money we owe? And remind me, and I apologize, I can't remember what, what we pay versus the government on Central Avenue. And do we owe anything left? Is there anything we owe still on Locust? Or have we met the financial obligation?
I'm gonna let Dan respond to that.
We were paying for Locust as it's getting built and I believe our number this year is 2 million for Locust. Central, it's over a two-year period, so they're going to be over two construction seasons and that's our share of construction, 30%, and then our share of the construction engineering.
Am I right? So we have 4 million left on just those streets and top of the 2 million that we want for the overall road program?
Correct, okay.
And that's factored into our assumptions here.
I got it. And then do we have any, is there any other major Locust or Central projects that you're targeting in the near?
The next arterial street we're targeting for federal funds is Willmett Avenue. That'll be a street resurfacing project, much lower cost.
And...
From Reggie Green. Yeah.
Sort of timing-wise, is that sort of a 20, 23 event? I mean...
It depends on how successful our grant application is and where it gets programmed by North Shore Council mayors.
Yeah, and those processes are changing, or in the process of changing as well in terms of how that money gets allocated, right?
Correct. Methodology is changing on how we score the applications, that's done by the technical committee. And there's going to be, I guess, a more regular interval of when those applications are, when the call-up projects are. So the anticipation is every two years we'll have an opportunity to submit a grant application for federal funds for road dollars.
This is a comparison of our revenue versus expenses for the entire engineering program. So you can see on the right side, the actual road dollars is just a portion of all the money that we spend on our road maintenance. And based on our 2020 recommendations to fund the engineering program, we're looking at about a quarter million dollar deficit based on our revenues.
Yeah, so that's the immediate concern as we move into the 2020 budget is we need to find that $250,000 to maintain this level of investment in the engineering program. We've been able to get by the past few years because we've had a reserve built up in the dedicated revenue fund. We've expended that full reserve on our accelerated maintenance programs. So, you know, we'll either need to come up with additional revenues or the engineering team can pare back some of these maintenance programs to get us by for one more year. But keep in mind, these numbers you see up here on the expense column, the engineering team's already pared it back at our request in the past week as we look to right-size these programs to make sure we're putting the right dollars in that makes sense for where we're at in the system, but not overdoing it either. You know, one of the problems that's gotten us to this point as well is on the revenue side, these revenues don't grow every year. So while our construction expenses are increasing with inflation each year, the revenues hold flat. So that vehicle license is just a flat transfer. We haven't increased our vehicle sticker fee for, you know, at least a decade now and we shouldn't because it's already high, but none of those revenues increase every year. Actually, the local fuel tax is decreasing. So while our expenses are growing, our revenues are holding flat or going down, making the problem worse each year and it's compounding.
Yeah, right. The only, the only thing on there that could be perceived as an inflationary revenue is sales tax. Everything else, we have to raise it for, to make a difference and fuel consumption is going down.
Yeah, and, and what we've learned with the home rule sales tax over time is that the home rule portion really stays flat. So when we see an increase in our sales tax, it's usually the non-home rule portion that increases. That, that home rules is generally stagnant.
Because home rule, that, the non, the home rule doesn't apply to groceries.
Groceries and vehicles, but we don't have the car dealership anymore.
Mike, you note that the motor fuel amount has been decreasing?
The local fuel tax for 250,000.
Folks just buying less gas or?
We have one less gas station in town since we had implemented these revenues and more fuel-efficient cars are resulting in less, less purchases.
And some cars that don't use fuel at all.
Date, though, aren't they?
So the state, the motor fuel tax line of a million dollars, that was about 640 to 700,000 dollars. So when the state doubled the gasoline, the motor fuel tax at all the pumps, we got a portion of that increase and that's reflected here. So the problem would have been much more significant without those additional MFT revenues that are starting this year.
Yeah, that's, I mean, 400, right? Four to five.
490 is the projection.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's a lot.
Is it projected or is that definite?
Well, it's, we're definitely getting the revenue. How much we end up getting, we'll see over the next few months to give us a sense of it.
But it could be as much as 500,000 dollars.
That's there about.
But it's included in this.
It's included.
Already factored into this.
But President Polanski, I didn't understand your point around the home rule sales tax and our portion is going down. I just, I didn't follow that logic.
No, I was saying it's, it's, it's the only thing that could be considered inflationary on that list.
And then, like...
But Mike said it's actually rather stagnant and the, and our, we, I mean, I think it's just a function of, I mean, sales tax overall this year is, is flat to down.
Yes.
So, but if you're thinking of what's inflationary on there, MFT is a per gallon charge, not a percent of sales. Degradation fee and overweight fines aren't, we haven't raised those. The property tax only goes up if we raise it and the vehicle license only goes up if we raise it. So although we've done a nice job collecting better, you know, we're on the high end of communities for that, right?
Yes.
It's actually quite a bit of, this, again, before my time, even before my time on the board, I think the last time we raised it.
Yeah, actually, I was curious on that because I was wondering what it was, but I just Googled. I mean, we're, we are high. I didn't believe you on that one.
Five bucks a car, right?
You're almost Chicago high.
Yeah.
There's a reason we haven't recommended an increase in that amount of time.
That's fair. I, that was one of my, that was...
Now, when the board did increase it at the time, it was done with the intent to transfer that rate of increase to the road program. So that incremental increase went directly to roads, which is where you see the money here.
This slide would have made more sense a few minutes ago when we were talking about all this. So we've talked about frigid temperatures, we talked about we could always do more maintenance. The one thing, though, that to keep in mind as you get into the next discussion, which is an accelerated road program, the downside is you're doing a whole bunch of streets at once, which means they're on the same lifecycle. So we're starting to see some of those streets that were done in the accelerated program in 1998, they're 20 years old and they're starting to all come due at the same time. So unfortunately, that's a trend that's going to work against us as well because we'll have these big blocks of street that are, streets that are all growing old together, if you will.
But in, in the meantime, if we don't, then we've got all of these serious streets that are getting more serious.
So I think the antidote to that is unfortunately twofold. I think an accelerated program would certainly bring us up to the level, but then we need to maintain that level with the 2 million or 2.3 million, whatever that sweet spot is, to keep those roads up to that level.
Plus the debt service.
Plus you got to pay back the money you borrowed.
Yeah, you're playing, you're right.
You're not getting around...
You're right.
Increasing revenue if, if you want to increase the condition.
So I'm going to turn it back over to my colleague.
So moving forward, the engineering department ran multiple scenarios based on two factors. Our first is looking at annual funding levels and evaluating the PCI trend over a 10-year period. And we will summarize our findings and a decision matrix at the end of that section. We will, we also looked at accelerated road programs based on several year varieties up to the retiring debt service in 2027. So we'll expand on each of these scenarios on the following slides, but the key thing we want to point out in these scenarios is that we are starting at a current overall PCI of 56. We are not referencing the retired debt funding in 2027 or 2028. And these numbers that we're using on the slides right now are 2019 construction costs. It does not include the annual construction inflation and our payer simulations do not have that factor accounted and we can look into that.
So what that really means is that each of these scenarios should be, you know, 2 million should be 2 million times 1.03 and 1.03 and 1.03 going forward.
And that way it'd keep up with construction prices. So, or inflation, I'm sorry.
A bunch of 3% increases add, add up over time.
Correct. So scenario one is maintaining the 2 million annual road program and that new funding needed, the 250,000, is based off of the previous revenue expense slide of where we are in our deficit there. Scenario one is, would be maintaining our status quo and meeting the previous target funding level that was discussed in 2016 and does not include inflation for construction. As we see over the 10-year period, we would have that initial bump in 2021, but it would slowly gradually decrease until it averages out at about a 54 PCI. So we would be in the poor rating. So essentially, scenario one would take us, would continue the decline that we've been seeing and then eventually, once we get to 2029, it would maintain that level of pavement condition. Scenario two, it has, is based on a 2.3 million dollar road program. The new funding needed would be about 450,000. How we came with, up with this budget number is it maintains the service life of the pavement for 30 years. So every 30 years, a street would be resurfaced if it was an asphalt street. As we can see, we get a little bit even higher jump instead of a 59 that we would, we see in the current 2020 projection. It would, our overall rating would jump up to 60, but we'd still see that gradual decline over the years until we get to about 57. That 57, again, which would be at the high end of the poor condition, would be maintained, or, sorry, at the low end of the fair condition, would be maintained going forward. or sorry, at the low end of the fair condition, would be maintained going forward at that funding level. So we start to see a scenario where we have a slight drop, but then the decline eventually holds off.
And Ryan, before you move on, at our next meeting, we're going to adjust these charts to show you what the impact of that retired debt service does in 2027 and beyond.
I think you also have to throw construction inflation in here because, you know, 2 million bucks 10 years from now isn't going to get us as much bang for the buck. Either that or, you know, I mean, showing a growth in revenue doesn't make, something's got to be held constant, right? You can't grow both of them, but, but, you know, I think that's a pretty big assumption here. I mean, road construction is not getting cheaper. We know that.
Thinking back to the 2016 exercise that we went through, it was, it was really all about building a bridge to 2027.
Yeah, yeah, right. No, I agree. You have to add 2027.
I think as we refine this more for the board as we go through it, we, it's the next critical seven years that we're, are really, are concerned.
And we will also see some major impacts of the retired debt once we get to the decision matrix for the annual funding levels as well as some examples after we do the accelerated program. So we will have more scenarios.
I'm sorry, I just want to add one more thing to something you said, President Polinsky, which is, I, I'm just, I'm concerned that all these models are also assuming that we're doing the optimized solution for the sewers in the next three years as opposed to creating an.
A point or two.
So, so that first, the point in 2020 may be starting lower, but these scenarios was regardless of the starting point, we might get to it sooner, but you would see if we did 2 million a year, you would average about a 54 PCI. Again, it would be sooner than what's shown, but eventually these.
Once you get to that level, it's self-sustaining is what you're saying. Okay.
Right. And then same with scenario two, you wouldn't jump up to 60 right away. It'd be like a, as you mentioned, one or two points of 58. But then you would drop down to the 58, 57 continuously at that level, funding level. Because again, the streets would be on a 30-year life cycle at that point. So it's, at a 30-year life cycle, you're maintaining a pavement condition that equates to a 57 PCI. When we go to the scenario three, which is 2.75 million, this budget number would maintain the service pavement life on a 25-year life cycle. As we can see, once we jump up to 60 with the optimized and other village improvement projects that are going to occur in 2020, we would maintain an average of 61, 60 going forward, having some points where it'd be higher, some points lower based on the amount of sections that are resurfaced in that year.
Right. And so one takeaway here, which I'd never got this before, is depending on your level and the quality of your streets, it costs more, if your streets are better quality, it costs more money to maintain them at that same level.
Right.
So like you level off at 54 and it's $2 million scenario. So $2 million maintains the 54. But if you're at 60 in scenario three, you need 2.75 million to not have degradation. Like if all of our streets were 100, to maintain 100, you'd have to repave them all every year, right? And the higher they are, the sooner you're repaving them, so the more money is going in. So.
And then that's what you see when we do the 3.5 million. That gives our street service life a 20-year life cycle, which in an ideal world, we would, you would see our overall condition skyrocket as we address more and more of the streets, which eventually would get us to a 71, 72 average or put us at that good to fair condition. However, to maintain that level, we would need an additional, again, using 2019 construction dollars, a 1.65 million increase. So again, that target of maintaining a 65 to 68 would be significantly, a significant improve, improvement of what we have currently going up 10 PCI overall average. Because again, going back to the slide where we had the fair and the, I'll just go back to it real quickly. Going back to the slide where we had the fair and poor condition, that fair range, wherever you are in that fair range, rideability is still pretty well. So our, what engineering can do with our programs is maintain a level that the board sees fit in terms of how we want our streets to look like over the years.
Can we, for the future too, when we talk about these annual funding levels, I mean, redoing a street in fair conditions seems like a waste of money. So where are we, what streets are we redoing based upon these funding levels, right? Are we, are we redoing serious streets? Are we doing very poor streets? Are we doing poor streets?
Right.
You know, how high are we actually redoing these streets?
That's a great question.
So we will be, when, when we start off our road program and get on a funding level, we would still target, the target in terms of candidates in the very poor, serious condition would still be our targets regardless of the funding level. It's just how many of those we would get done. So eventually, at those higher levels, you'd see this histogram or bar chart shift where more of our streets would be in the good, excellent and fair categories and we'd have much less in serious or poor. Because we will always have streets that are at least in the very poor condition.
So I'm going to attempt to make a joke and I know it's late, but Bridget, would you say we're quite a ways away from having enough money in the road program that we would consider repairing a fair street? Okay, all right, that's a.
And, and so like.
In other words, there's, we need a lot, we need to have a lot of money for us because we're not, it's not like we're knocking off all the serious ones next year and we'll get through all the very pores next, the following year.
Oh, right.
We're like a mile away.
Yeah, right.
One other interesting point of reference though is just that on scenario four where you see the increased new funding, that is roughly the amount of the debt service that we're talking about peeling off in 2027 to the extent it causes progressive improvement of the, the ratings. That's, it's about one and a half million dollars, bit more than that, that peels off in terms of money that's paying bonds.
And that might be interesting to look at because while in the short term, it's a nice sugar high to go borrow a bunch of money and spend it. It might be interesting to look at this beyond 2027 so that you can see that if you don't create new debt service needs, like without having an incremental funding source, you actually have a path to increasing. And so we could borrow some money, but then basically you're filling that, you're, you're lowering the slope of that improvement line, potentially to nothing if you borrow enough that it uses all that up.
Right.
So, so it might be interesting to look at this, you know, I know we're not planning for 30 years out, but, but just from a conceptual, what the, what the unspoken cost of borrowing money to do roads is, if you will. Does that make sense?
And, and just one other thing to point out, the streets that are in good to fair condition now, as you would main, like in scenario three or four, the ones you would maintain, would go in the road program and do the very poor to serious, those in good to fair would eventually drop down. So it is a continuous cycle. And that's why once, with scenario four, if we expanded this out 20 years again without the debt service relief, you would see that would hover around the 71 to 72 because eventually we would be on a 20-year cycle for all of our streets so that our road program would be very consistent. We would be maintaining about, I think, 5% area of the streets per year. And then by doing those streets, we would maintain that overall average.
But, but the way the average works is you've got something that's a 40 and it becomes 100.
Exactly.
And so how many 40s become hundreds while everything else drops two points or a point or whatever, you know, it drops in a year. Yeah.
Thank you. So, and then going to the decision matrix, because this, at the last page, or the right column does show after, in 10 years, what the impact would be raising the, with having retired debt relief of about 1.75 million in 2027 and 2018. So years five and 10 alone mimic exactly what was shown on those charts. But at 10 years with doing the retired debt in 2027, 2028, so adding 1.75 million to each of those funding levels, you would see, as noted, dramatic increases in the overall PCI just over those two years. So if the 2.3 million, you would see the steady decline. So from over 10 years at that 2.3 million mark, we'd go from the 59 after 2020 improvements to a 57. However, if we account 2027, 2028, you'll see that we are actually higher up in the fair condition once we have that retired debt. So that will be a significant factor. And the accelerated programs will have another example of that. So the three, the three years we looked at is doing all of the, having one substantial road program in 2020, having a road accelerated program over four years and then having an accelerated program over eight years, which would get us to 2027. All projections include the streets that will be addressed by the other 2020 village improvement projects. And after completing an accelerated program, the road program in general would still need to maintain additional funding level as we've mentioned overall, in order to keep sustained average.
If I could just point out, the, the one-year programs are really for demonstration purposes. We don't have the capability to manage Central Avenue reconstruction, the Stormwater Project and $10 million of roads all in 2020. So that would still have to be spread out over a couple of years.
So we looked at number of years and how long it would take us to reach overall pavement condition ratings. So if you looked at one year and we wanted to get between that 65 to 68, it would cost 7.6 million to 11 million in just construction dollars. So that doesn't include engineering expenses or general inflation beyond 2020. As you can see, for the other years, we would spend less per year, but it would be still significantly higher than what we are currently allocating for the road program of that $2 million budget request.
A question. And I assume this also takes, I guess, I, I guess there's also an assumption in here that you're going to stop doing the shared revenue programs that siphon money away from the road program?
This.
Is that?
Yeah, yes. Sorry, for the federal, yes, yes.
This is just, this is actual spending on roads as opposed to road budget.
Right, and then we're not going to continue to, yeah, got it. So I just want to make sure I understand this. This is, this, this chart is saying, if we wanted to do an accelerated road program, we could do it just by putting a lot of money in all in one year or putting a lot of money in over four years or putting a lot of, I'm just trying to make sure I understand what this is showing me.
So for the first, for, if we want to do it all in one year, it's just the top, the top line there. The 4 million to, 4.8 million for 62, 7.6 for 65, et cetera.
And it assumes if you did it all in one year, so, you know, let's just say we wanted to get to 65.
Yep.
And we put 7.6 million and then it's a $2 million ongoing then?
It just gets you to that level.
Just gets you to the level.
But it doesn't, it gets you to that level, but to maintain that level.
Yes, you need more than 2 million every year then to maintain.
Maintaining, you would need to do one of these scenarios.
So we would be doing this, the, we do, we pick an accelerated road program and a funding level program, both? One for, you know what I mean?
That's the challenge of doing the accelerated program. And that's part of the reason we're in this situation is when we did the accelerated program from 98 to 2008, we never were able to come up with that additional money to pay for the ongoing road program because it was all going to debt service.
So, right, and.
So we've got to do some annual funding scenarios and then we've got to look at accelerated to give us a jump.
Yeah, the level, and the level of annual funding necessary to maintain is higher at higher levels.
Right, okay.
And just, just to show too, in that eight-year scenario, to get to like a 68, where we, where we, we would be doing 3.5 million a year, it correlates to the scenario chart right there for scenario four. As you see in year eight, we would be at that 6, 66 to 67, which would match that 3.5 million funding level, if that makes sense.
Right, whether you do it, and that, that answers my question, which is that funding level is not incremental to the $2 million.
No, it's not.
It includes the $2 million. This is total spending, not on top of 2 million.
Correct. This, so the accelerated program would be, it's separate from that annual funding level.
So your, so your point is, on this chart, if you look at the 3.5 million and the eight-year, you get a 68. If you go back two slides to scenario four, which is 3.5 million of spending and you look out to eight years from now, you get to the same sort of number. Right, okay, but to, so whether you borrow the money or whether you just increase your spending.
There, and if we did it in one year and we spent 8 million dollars, we still have to plan to come up with somewhere in between 2.75 and 3.5 just to maintain that 65.
Right, otherwise you're doing this.
Yeah, we're going, we're letting it go. And echo, echo the point before, the fact that we could just increase the funding and catch up that quickly, like over that eight-year scenario, does show that we have, we are in a position where we haven't, the ceiling has, or the floor hasn't dropped yet. You know, we're still in a position to improve the road program to improve the overall average.
I think the next two slides will show the impacts of the PCIs and the additional money is needed with these accelerated programs. There you go.
So we did two examples. I'll go through example, the initial construction portion. If we assume that the village conducts a one-year accelerated program in 2020 and in order to achieve a PCI of 65, the estimated budget that we would need to request for the road program would be that 7.6 million in construction costs plus 10% engineering costs because of the amount of turnaround to get that program designed and implemented would be 8.6 million. The next, after doing that one-year accelerated program, we would, if we maintain a funding level of 2 million per year up to 2026 and then we get that debt relief, increased funding to 3.2 million, you'll see after 2026, we start going back up. But again, that's because we're spending 3.2 million equivalent to 2019 dollars.
Yeah, and this is a good illustration. Look, if we spend $2 million a year, we slowly degrade at a point or two a year. If we spend $3 million a year, we improve by a point or two a year. I mean, it's, and in between, it's in between, but $2 million a year doesn't keep us flat.
And, and so with this example, we would, we would need new annual revenue of about $600,000 in order to fund the debt service. The next example will.
And then new revenue would just be through, from 2020 through 27. And then when that other debt service rolls off, you would then factor it into there. But that's, that's a lot of new revenue in a short period of time.
Right.
And you're saying the 600, is the debt service for the 7.6 million?
Correct.
Okay, just making sure.
And just to clarify, this doesn't even touch brick streets, right?
Correct.
So brick street expenses of maintenance and improvement are on top of these.
Yeah, this is just.
Because that's part of the overall engineering program. We are just focusing on the one road program. Correct. Or the street resurface.
Those, those numbers are factored in our overall engineering program. So when we say we need 250,000, make sure that does include the brick program.
Oh, you mean that one slide, yes.
So when we say we need 250,000, that's everything.
Right. Yeah, then, then obviously the construction costs would be for the road program, which is right now in this slide, 2 million. What would be 7.8 million or 8.6 million in this example?
But actually, if we wanted to create a nicer picture, just in terms of, we could, if we wanted to talk about the condition of all of our streets, we could be including the brick streets because the brick streets are in better condition. I'm just. Are they? Yeah, I think they are, right?
How do you rate the brick streets?
I don't think so.
Is there a system or? Yeah, there's a separate rating system, not necessarily, not apples to apples necessarily or?
What?
We're rating, rating the entire brick in Florida next year.
So we're going to, and it, in order, yeah, so on a three-year cycle, one year we're going to do all of the streets. One year we're going, all the non-brick streets, then we're going to do the brick streets and then we'll do our alleys. So every year, we're going to be on a three-year cycle.
The asphalt overlay bricks are in this.
Yeah, correct, yeah. And then as you replace, as you rehabilitate those into brick, they come out of our paver program.
Right, yeah, yeah.
So not to put you on the spot, but if you had to speculate on what the average PCI of the brick streets is, what would you say?
Yeah.
You don't want to?
No.
Okay, that's fine.
You can bounce on a few of them. Next slide.
Something to look forward to.
So.
I had an Uber driver comment on that. It's like, I've never been on these streets before.
The patching work that our group did is, on a few of them, they've done a good job. And then I know some of the strips have been a significant improvement.
So following the same scenario as before, we're doing a one-year accelerated road program in 2020 with a, to maintain, to achieve an average PCI of 65. We would need the 8.6 million upfront. However, if we would maintain the road program at 1.435 million per year to 2026 and then do 3.2, which would mean that the debt service could be funded with the existing road program revenues, you'll see, I'll flip between the slides just to show, we get that initial increase, but it does drop considerably because we are not. we get that initial increase, but it does drop considerably, because we are not keeping that 2 million funding. It's, we're just under 600,000 less. However, once that retired debt comes into effect in 2027, we start increasing. And eventually, it'll take us much longer, but eventually, we will hover around that average that this scenario would get to sooner.
Any money that goes into the roads helps the condition.
Yes.
Whether it's part of the annual program, or whether it's part of something accelerated. If you spend money, the roads get better. If you don't, they get worse. Not to oversimplify it, but there is no, there's no free lunch here. There's no sort of, oh, how do we magically, you know, no financial engineering that, you know, works either here. So it's just, what do we want to spend, and when do we want to spend it?
And again, we're, in engineering, we are looking at the maintenance items to try to maintain, or again, like with the area patching this year, with the 200,000 increase, the overall average. But yeah, in terms of, to your point, you'd have to put money into it to get to that, whatever level we are seeking. So, the next steps. We need to, in order to go forward with our road programs, we need to determine and approve a funding strategy. So some of the questions that we'll discuss at the committee of the whole meetings are, do we want to maintain our existing funding level? Do we want to increase annual funding? Do we want to reexamine the engineering program priorities as a whole? Again, the pavement patching, brick, et cetera. And, or do we want to conduct an accelerated program? So we can, as we've mentioned throughout the presentation, we'll modify some of the slides. We'll go a little more further detail into these scenarios. And we will have items such as the overall PCI map update, or the overall road program map updating GIS, so that you guys can see what this year's rating of the entire roadway network produced.
So, I would encourage the trustees, to the extent, you know, I'm, at this point in time, a pretty big road nerd. To the extent you want to learn more, and ask questions, and have scenarios or whatever, and what if we please reach out to the staff? Because there's, I mean, we spent an enormous amount of time, this is very helpful, sort of, front-loading it, so we're not, you know, okay, now what are we gonna do? Like, we've had meetings where, and we've actually said, you know what? Let's not make a decision at midnight on millions of dollars of spending. Let's, and we added an extra meeting in 2016 as a result of that. So this is helpful to get it upfront, gets you thinking about it, gets you thinking about your questions, you know, interact with Bridget, and Mike, and Tim, and, you know, we'll be ready to roll in September.
And for those September meetings, the September 16th meeting is going to be road program as well as the water and sewer CIP. We want to dig deeper on that and identify the impacts on the water and sewer rates for 2020, and how we can maybe reprioritize some of our capital projects to try to stem the magnitude of the rate increases. But we do anticipate some increases, so we want to dig into that. And then September 23rd, Raftellus will be here to discuss the Stormwater Utility Fee again, and go through our policy considerations. And if we need to, at the end of that meeting, we can continue discussing roads as well.
Such fun.
When are we, we have a lot of meetings, so this is not going to make it an easier question, because I feel like if this meeting comes up, and we're going to talk about just funding here, it's, we're doing this in somewhat of a silo, given all the other spending that we have. We increased the pension requirements, so that's what I'm trying in my head to keep up of. We have basically increased everything that we have to fund next year, on the expense side, a majority of the big ones.
That's all we're concerned about.
Yes. Right, so, it's almost a chicken and the egg. We're gonna talk about this versus the overall budget. So sort of, help me out with just some of the timing. And again, my brain is not functioning as well as it was four hours ago, so, a little tired. I mean, maybe that's, maybe you can't answer that, maybe it's just...
I mean, these meetings will inform how we put the budget together, that you're gonna get at the first meeting in October, after which we're going to, you'll have the whole enchilada.
Right, but I think what, yeah, I think what Dan is saying is, like, we're tossing all the ingredients into the pan, but we have no idea what the omelet's gonna look like, and, you know, it was tasteless.
Perfectly said. That actually made a lot of sense.
I think we can provide some context in terms of where all those increases are going at that September 16th meeting, so you see the big picture. Because it's Stormwater Utility Fee, it's road program, it's the property tax levy for pensions and operations. There's a lot, so we can have a couple of slides on that, so that provides context.
Yes, that would be great, and a great suggestion, Dan. Okay, we done with roads?
Yes.
So...
Thank you very much.
As promised, I was very brief. Our other seven items were easily approved on consent.
We are still going through the committee reports, so Public Safety Committee, Trustee Kersman?
All items covered on consent.
Okay. Trustee Plunkett, Judiciary Committee?
All items covered on consent, except...
I was gonna say, nice try. Nice try.
We're on break, it's 11 o'clock.
The sugar high, doesn't hear the line?
Agenda in front of me, because we've got, obviously, okay. All right, so now we have a presentation concerning the legalization of cannabis in Illinois.
Okay, so, first off, good news is, we're not taking any action tonight. This is just an opportunity to learn more, to ask questions of staff. And Jeff is going to be driving this, because this is largely a legal discussion.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, and by the way, what point in time do we need a motion to continue the meeting?
11:30.
11:30, okay.
11:30, not 11?
All right.
11:30 or four hours?
What, what happens at 11:30?
You have to agree to continue.
Is it 11:30, or is it four hours? That's a good question.
11:30. The ordinance is 11:30.
Okay, so we've got 11 minutes.
I can do it.
Can you get that done, 11 minutes?
I sure can.
Okay.
Depending on you guys, all right, all right, so...
But, sorry, you said we're not taking any action, this is informational.
Essentially informational only, and this is directed only at what the village board would act on. It doesn't cover the entire new Cannabis Act, such as what the state will regulate, you know, ultimately, or, you know, the other equality things that they have in that act. It doesn't really impact us here at the village, so. And it doesn't, we're not talking about expungements or anything that does impact the police department. But again, there's nothing we can really do about that, so I kind of limited this presentation to only what the village board needs to know at this point, on the zoning aspects and the regulatory aspects that we can control. So you have before you two memos, which will hopefully, hopefully you have read. Tim's memo is essentially the policy memo. What policy do we want to take? My memo is essentially the legal memo. And this presentation's kind of combining the two a little bit, and to get to the next steps. So, we're gonna talk about what's now lawful, what remains unlawful, which is still quite a bit, and how the village can regulate the sale of cannabis, and then the recommended next steps. All right, so cannabis now can be possessed and consumed by...
Excuse me, not now, January 1st.
Okay, yeah, we'll get, yes, January 1st.
For the benefit of anybody listening at home.
What will be lawful?
Not now.
Cannabis on January 1st, 2020, will be, anybody over the age of 21 can possess cannabis and consume it. Okay, it can, the cannabis that they can possess, they have to get from a state licensed dispensary and/or other type of craft user, what it's called, or a craft grower. And it can only be a certain potency and a certain amount of weight. You can't just go buy five pounds of cannabis. So, and that's 30 grams of cannabis in its raw form, which is the leaves. There's five grams of cannabis in the cannabis concentrate. These are now different ways to ingest cannabis, or cannabis-infused products. They think of what they call gummies, right? Cannabis is now, THC is now in a gummy bear, and you would eat that. And that's essentially 500 milligrams of the THC. Medical cardholders, and this is important, can grow up to five plants, five inches or more. We cannot regulate that. The village cannot say we don't want that in the town. The state law has to allow it. The caveat is, is you have to have a medical card to do that. It can't just be anybody else. That was the last minute change to the, to the act. So there's still a lot that is unlawful. Simply because you can possess cannabis doesn't mean you can smoke it or ingest it anywhere you'd like, right? So you can't have it on school grounds anymore, or at all, right? The same with medical. You cannot have it in a vehicle that's not open to public meeting. You can't have it sitting on a locked vehicle, on the seat. It has to be in a container and inaccessible. It cannot be consumed in a public place. Now, a public place is also defined now in the act as basically anywhere that's, anybody has a reasonable belief that it would be public, okay? So, on the street, public right-of-way, here in Village Hall, in a business, you cannot sit there and just walk in...
Even walking down the street.
Walking down the street, you cannot have a, sit there and have a joint hanging out of your mouth, lighting, you know.
Can I say a question on this? Because I travel, and certain communities have legalized this earlier, and I'm sort of seeing it in my business travels. What's San Francisco's law on this? Is it the same, where, or is it generally that the case where people can't consume it in a public place? Or do you know?
I have no clue what San Francisco's law is.
Because, like, every corner you walk around in San Francisco, the smell is noticeable now. And I just can't imagine they passed a law that said you can smell, you know, marijuana in public.
I can absolutely look into it for you, but I...
Because I'm just curious what to expect. You know, there's one thing what the law is, and it's another thing what we should expect to see in practice.
Well, so one of those things that I think you're trying to address, we will get to, as to what we can regulate locally. That includes to making sure that people don't just walk around the joint hanging out of their mouth.
I mean, this says, state law says you can't do it in a public place.
And we would then do what we do now, where we have essentially decriminalized marijuana, but we still regulate it where it is now a fine-only type of offense. And we would amend our code, it's one of the recommendations I'm making. Whether we approve cannabis or not to be sold here, we should still regulate that you can't have it, and it can be locally controlled.
Yeah.
Other, there's another whole laundry list of places where you cannot, where cannabis cannot be consumed. Probably the most important one is anywhere with the Smoke-Free Illinois Act. Includes cigarettes from being smoked, cannabis cannot be consumed.
Consumed or smoked?
Consumed.
Okay.
Consumed. So, that would include government buildings as well. I think the difficulty with what, I think you're saying here is, would it be difficult to know if someone took a gummy, gummy bear that was a real gummy bear, or cannabis-infused gummy bear here in Village Hall? I don't know if that scenario would come up, but it very well may.
He'll look it up, but it is illegal to smoke it in public.
It is.
In San Francisco, but I agree with you. You can, it says, it's illegal to consume, smoke, eat, vape cannabis in public. But just, you can, it's all over. I have done that as well.
So, individuals, there are certain individuals that cannot consume cannabis, but they only while they're on duty. That's, you know, law enforcement, corrections officers, you know, firefighters.
So how does this affect, like, drug testing? Because do we, do we have a, do we currently have a drug testing regime for our public safety officers?
Well, we have, we have a, yeah, incident-based drug testing.
Well, police has, is subject to random drug testing under their collective bargaining agreement. There's also incident-based drug testing for incidents such as fire use, you know, a traffic accident, discharging firearm, that type of thing, under their collective bargaining agreement. Fire is subject to, for cause, drug testing. And then public works employees who have CDL licenses, commercial drivers licenses to drive the heavy trucks, are subject to both random testing and incident-based testing.
And so are our thresholds gonna have to change? I mean, I don't know if our, if we had a zero tolerance on it for a police officer?
No.
Or if it was just that there was, you know...
In terms of the thresholds for, for example, the CDL operators, those are set by federal law, so those don't change. In terms of the thresholds set in the collective bargaining agreements, they're in both fire and police, those do not change. Those are safety-sensitive employees, and the notion is that they can't be at work having, the way the policy is written is you cannot appear for work with a certain blood concentration of, and then it lists a whole host of controlled substances and cannabis, and what the cutoff levels are.
So it's very specific, is what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
So, cannabis can be purchased, just like medical cannabis can now, from a state licensed facility. Okay, so that's a, you know, dispensary or dispensing organization. Right now, the state only has, I believe it's a total of 60 dispensaries for the medical.
Where's the nearest one? Did Evanston get there?
Evanston has two.
Okay.
I don't know if anything north us, besides what Keegan has.
Highland Park has one.
Highland Park might have one, I think, I know what Keegan has one.
That's two.
I know Jefferson Park has one. But, these are gonna, these dispensaries are gonna increase significantly, to the point with after three years, there's gonna be above 500 licenses. So it's going to be significant. Now, these are statewide, you know, it's not just, obviously, 500 in Cook County, or...
But presumably, they're gonna allocate them by population.
By population, absolutely, so...
So, Jeff, speak a little bit more about the allocation. So in year, in the first year, it's 75 statewide.
Statewide.
That strikes me as not very many. So, who gets them? How is that figured out?
They are, there's certain by region, a certain number of dispensaries go by regions, just like medical cannabis. Medical cannabis, I believe, is divided into 21, 22 regions. Cook County is his region, and it will have, obviously, the most. I don't know the first year exactly how many it'll get. I'm assuming it's gonna be a majority. And what municipalities they go into, or what unincorporated areas, Cook County, is gonna depend on the actions the municipalities take, because we'll get to that prohibition. It is like 28.
Yeah, so...
I mean, ultimately, Peter, there's gonna be a host of would-be retailers who are gonna apply to the state for licenses, and those will include the locations where they want to be licensed. And then the state will essentially, in the process of reviewing all those license applications, they're going to have, they're going to be allocating licenses based on population and density, and there may be, if they've, if there's no applications from a particular county, then maybe those go elsewhere. But it's, in a way, it's very hard to tell, because you don't know who the putative operators are gonna be, and where they're gonna apply for licenses, and what proof they'll have of leases and whatever. And for all the municipalities who may be approving of having the dispensaries in town, at least for the first couple of years, you have no idea whether you're gonna get one or not.
So, let me interrupt. I do need a motion, it's almost 11:30. I would suggest maybe a motion until 11:45.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, do we need a real call, or are we just...
Voice vote.
All who's in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we're extended to 11:45.
Trustee Burrows, can I answer your question?
Yeah, yeah, I, it's kind of hard to picture, you know, this being Illinois and Cook County, that it's sort of just, it just happens that, it just seems like a very political process, rather than geographic.
It has proven to be sort of a political process for medical cannabis, so. It's a similar, it's a similar process to what medical cannabis, you have to go through state licensing, then you have to determine whether or not your, the location you pick, is it allowed to be zoned there? And then you have to get the license, whether you might be the 76th person, or the first, depends on the state.
And the dispensaries, they have to be privately held, right? I mean, it can't be a municipality can't provide, I mean, or, it's gotta be, it's gonna be individuals, or...
Well, they are, they are usually, yeah, they are usually some sort of corporation, or liability corporation, that puts in the application, and they are ultimately responsible. There are significant fines and things that do come with if you do violate it, more for the dispensaries and the cultivation than they are for the end users. I mean, you're talking $50,000 in fines, you know, potential fines for violations. So what can we do? What can we not do is really why we're here tonight, obviously. So we have general business regulations, just like we would for any type of use, whether it's medical cannabis, whether it's a thrift shop, whether it's a clothing store. You know, there are certain standards that we have that our building code requires, and our public safety laws require. Can't have exposed wiring, you can't have, you have to have a fire alarm system. You know, there are those things that still apply. They're not gonna go away just because the state says this is a weird use. So those are the obvious ones, those would apply anyway today under our codes. The zoning is the big issue. That's where we're gonna have to make some really, some serious decisions as to what it is the village policy would be. The village can prohibit all sales within this village, you know, by, through its zoning code. It can also substantially limit those. It can substantially limit, and it can say, I would like cultivations, but not dispensaries, or vice versa. I would like a craft grower, but not this, I would only like one, I would only like two. And obviously, you know, we would determine where they can be. That's probably the biggest use, the biggest issue. So, you know, if it's to prohibit, that's, that's number one, that's easy, we're done. We changed the zoning code and it's prohibited. But if it's something that we want to consider allowing, there are other decision points that need to be made. We have, again, what type of use are we gonna allow? Dispensary cultivation, craft users, you know, one, two, or three of those? Do we want to make them permitted uses? I would assume no, if that was, you know, it'd be a special use, to go through the process, the traffic process and all that. Enable, we, we can enact reasonable zoning regulations. Some of those, the time in which operations are already, uh, a dispensary can operate or in the state statute, we still may be able to further limit that. It's, I think it's from six to ten, six in the morning to ten o'clock at night. I think we could further limit that. Uh, there are other security issues that the state does regulate pretty significantly, the security of it. But if we felt that wasn't enough, I think we could add on to that. That, those issues have not really been hammered out in the legislature or obviously the courts yet, because we haven't been there. But I do think those are maybe worth exploring and possibly implementing. Another one would be, um, the minimum distances from other sensitive locations, schools and parks. We already have that when it comes to medical cannabis, there'd be no reason not to have that for recreational cannabis. In fact, it'd probably be more so. Uh, and then limited total number of establishments, one dispensary, two dispensaries. Uh, we can do that, um, the state legislature has authorized us to do that. So any questions on that before I get into taxation aspects?
Just quickly, maybe this is under taxation, but, um, is this like a cash business? I mean, because the federal government still prohibits this, so is this only?
This is gonna be a strong cash business, right? So that's, that's why some of the security issues come into play. You know, where, you know, they, there's, the state legislature mandates that they have to have two employees. On guard, you know, one of those doesn't have to be a security guard according to the state, but we may be able to say, you have to be a licensed security guard, you know, during open hours and, and operations, you know. There's other aspects that the state police already requires as far as, uh, like kind of bank walls where you can't get in, you can't get past certain things in the vault. They have all that kind of laid out already. I think we would be okay with it, but if we weren't, we could add on to that. Those are more for the, the questions down the road of what, if we want to allow this, what, what's it gonna look like here in Womack?
Bank, you can't, we still can't, banks still can't bank them.
That's right.
Right, banks can have, that's right. So as far as taxation goes.
So they haven't solved that problem yet?
No.
I mean, there's so much.
It's still illegal at the federal level.
I know, but.
Banks are usually.
So can.
Credit unions can't.
Okay, all right. There had to be someplace that money could go, some sort of state chartered entity or something.
Well, but then again, only if the state allows it.
Right, I understand, right, yeah, yeah, yeah.
So the state legislature has authorized, well, there's municipalities and unincorporated Cook County to tax the retail cannabis stores up to three percent. That's only the dispensaries or where cannabis is sold from the store to the end user, to the consumer. Not cultivation centers and not craft growers, that aspect, we cannot tax that. Think of it as liquor. We don't tax the, the creation, you know, the, the people making the liquor, we don't tax the people distributing it, we only tax the end user. Uh, and that's exactly what they've allowed. It's up to three percent on the sales. The state has a higher tax, much higher tax, though.
Plus the local.
So that is a, does it, yeah, that's what I was gonna ask, is that local tax or home rule tax?
It's three plus two.
It's three plus two.
It's an additional three percent tax.
Think of it as an excise tax.
It's an additional to the sales tax?
We'd get five percent if you were to tax it all.
Of the home rules.
Correct, got it.
Yeah, correct. We could, yeah, if you go up to three percent, right. So with all this, there are some recommended code amendments that I have, no matter what we do, whether we allow it or not allow it. And I think they're kind of important to, to, to do and do pretty much before January first, obviously. We would amend the zoning ordinance no matter what to include these definitions. We don't want someone to ever make a claim that they, they are a medical cannabis facility, which we have to allow by statute. We cannot zone out. Uh, and then be able to get a license and convert to recreational and then they have a vested interest. And we would be, you know, fighting an uphill battle. If we put the definitions and make it very clear, uh, then, then we zone them out, let's say, or we even zone them in a different location, then there would be no, no leg for them to stand on. So we are recommending the judiciary committee would hear this, uh, at the public hearing, and we're gonna do that the next meeting. But it would, just so it's important, it would just be for the text definition, the text change to the zoning ordinance for the definitions to be included. Not, not the broader discussion of do we want to do this or not do this? Okay, the next thing is, is again, what I talked about, we, we would amend our smoke free ordinance as well as the miscellaneous offenses to make sure that people that are walking around with, with, you know, a joint hanging out of their mouth, that they would be able to be cited locally and come to adjudication, not necessarily go to circuit court, just like they would now. And, uh, it would be the same offense, it wouldn't be any different and we have every right to, to do that and we should. I mean, there might be some minor tweaks to it, it might even actually be okay, the way it is right now. But if someone's in violation of the new cannabis law, then it would be, I'd like to make it a, a village violation.
Well, at a minimum, you have to change that such that possession isn't a violation.
Right, right, the possession alone, right.
I have a question just on that, you're, you know, that we have to amend the zoning ordinance sooner than later to describe the types of cannabis. Um, you're saying it's, we have to do that because of existing medical uses, but do we have medical marijuana, um, shops in Womack right now? Why does this?
We do not.
So why does this, why do we have to do this right away?
Okay, we have, so the state law on medical marijuana required each municipality to allow them into their town. You didn't have the option to prohibit, prohibit them completely. So you zoned them, you put them in special, certain zoning districts, so I believe a dispensary.
We already have these provisions in our.
We have these provisions in the code already, medical, the medical cultivation center. And a medical dispensary are already in the code. I believe dispensaries are in the G C one and cultivations in G C two, it might be.
Are they allowed, they're special uses?
They're special uses.
Special uses, but you, you already have all the definitions that you need for medical cannabis in the zoning ordinance, the zones that they can be in and, and other regulations. So the, the, I, I think the recommendation is, is that because the state has now further changed the rules, we need to go back and update the zoning ordinance to, to do that.
They've created a, they've created a new but similar category. So it would just remove any kind of confusion or ability for someone to.
Okay.
Get on the code.
To extend it, to extend it exists.
Exactly.
Okay.
So, um, the last one that I do recommend, the last code change, is that we do enact a taxation ordinance. And I'm gonna explain a little more in depth why, because it might be confusing as to why we would allow, why would we have a tax for something we didn't ever allow. The General Assembly used to allow for cigarettes to be taxed by local governments. And in nineteen ninety-three, they changed that. And they said, no tax entered into before nineteen ninety-three or after nineteen ninety-three, you know, you cannot tax after nineteen ninety-three. And with that, you are barred, whether you, whether you banned cigarettes in your town and then changed, changed it later, you are no longer allowed to tax. If the original tax was on the books in that scenario, it would presumably still be allowed to tax. It would be at zero percent or three percent, depending on what it is. Let's say you allowed the cigarette sale, but made it zero percent, you could increase the tax. It just would not allow for a new tax.
Consider a new tax.
So I don't, I'm being overly cautious, I don't know if it would solve a problem and I know that if it is a problem, I know that what general legislate, the General Assembly could easily amend its way out of that. But I do think it's worth a shot, at least to put it in there and to keep it on the books as a dormant tax for as long as we wanted to keep it dormant. That way, if they did something similar, they did ninety-three for cannabis, we'd have a fighting argument to keep a tax. So that is, that's really the main reason for that. I know it can be somewhat confusing, why would we tag something we're not gonna, maybe not allow? But it's, what if we changed the policy? And so, you know, it's just being extremely cautious. So at the next, at the next board meeting, the village is gonna recommend that we, again, refer this to the judiciary committee. The draft ordinances will, the, with that referral will be the draft ordinances for the text amendments. But I will also have text, uh, draft ordinances for the miscellaneous offenses, section in the Smoke Free Act, uh, and the tax. So that will be on the agenda for next meeting. It'll be introduction of those ordinances and a referral. The bigger next steps, I believe, are the discussion of whether the bigger policy issues. Do we wanna permit the sale of recreation cannabis, prohibit it? Or according, in Mr. Frenzer's memo, which I'll let him address, uh, is, is, you know, a very good history of what, of what we've done here in Womack with liquor, as well as how we've treated marijuana, but maybe a moratorium and a referendum is something that the board would be interested in.
Are you suggesting that we vote on this in two weeks? I mean, are we gonna have enough? It says, at the next village board meeting, we will request that the board discuss and determine the action.
Well, I mean.
We're not gonna, but we're not gonna vote on an ordinance, we're not gonna vote on that ordinance at the next board meeting. We will need some direction, we believe, because we have a, we have a short clock here.
At, at a minimum, at the next board meeting, we'll need to appoint judiciarys, a special zoning committee to do the, the required amendments to the zoning ordinance. The mandatory amendments to the village code we should have introduced. The board needs to make a decision within some reasonable time before the end of the year in terms of that, so we can, if, however the board feels ready to address this, this macro issue of what do we do? Could be in four weeks, could be in six weeks. Honestly, I'd like to look at, as we look forward to the agendas, try to find a, where we have, where you can digest this at some time before quarter to midnight. You know, it's, the, the macro issues boil down to, right now, most of our neighbors are either going to pass an ordinance to prohibit it, pass an ordinance to allow it and, uh, some like Niles are well on their way to doing that. Some are still struggling with it and they're passing what they call red flag ordinances or a moratorium ordinances, where they, they want further time to study it and also further time to engage, uh, with the residents. You can do that in a variety of ways, I just find it, personally, I think it's, it's interesting that, uh, since Womack, engaged the residents, the referendum in terms of alcohol control and liquor control and, uh, ceasing to be a, a dry town and also that, uh, there was the recent, uh, referendum in Cook County on, uh, whether or not people think that cannabis should be, made lawful for recreational use. The people who voted in Womack voted pretty consistently with the countywide, um, basically two to one in favor of it. But that, that doesn't mean that the same result obtains if the question was, do you want it sold here?
Yeah, I mean, and look, you think back to the, one of the last liquor licenses we granted to Walgreens at Lake and Green Bay Road. And we, the neighbors showed up, said, we don't want, we don't want the kind of people who would go buy liquor hanging out near our house. That was, that was exactly it, I mean.
Those people.
And, um, and so, you know, I think there's, I think there is a, I think there's a question of the applicability of a, a referendum which, which approved legality of it in the state versus, you know, selling it, uh, at Ridge and Lake, you know, or at.
And that certainly wasn't the question that was asked or answered.
And, and even if you, you know, a referendum question along the lines of shall the village or Womack?
I need, I need another motion. Can we extend for five, five more minutes?
I move we extend the meeting until, um, eleven-fifty?
No, let's go all the way, go, go to midnight.
No, 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 because they'll use the time.
I'm saying no to that. Eleven fifty-nine, I can do.
All right.
What's, what's the time?
I hear eleven fifty-five.
Okay, eleven fifty-five, that we extend the meeting to eleven fifty?
Is there a second?
Yes, second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, yeah, ten more minutes, but please use less.
Yes. What was I gonna say? The, you know, even if that referendum passed by the same numbers, then it still triggers the process of having to pick zoning districts for it, the same way we did with the medical dispensaries and what type of density do you want a while, just one? More, I don't, you know.
Yeah, Tim, I think it would be very helpful for, for us to have a, a list really of what our, our local neighbors are doing.
I agree.
Yeah, it's in such.
Next time we talk about this.
I, I, I agree with you completely, it's, it's in such flux right now. But over the next several weeks, hopefully this'll firm up more.
And I don't see at the next board meeting, I think trustee Plunkett, this is where you're going, I don't see the next board meeting, us voting on the first two on this list. Maybe we say, hey, you know what, we do need more time and we would make that decision in two weeks, but there's no way in two weeks we're gonna say, oh, yep, we're good or we're bad. You know, I just, it seems like there's more engagement that you would need to do with the community before you sort of got to that point. And I'm, look.
Could we do some?
Put something on the agenda and people will show up, but I'm not sure that's really engagement either.
I think that's the reason why a lot of people are essentially doing the moratorium and punting until twenty twenty to figure out what they wanna do with it and it's, it's not an easy decision.
Mm-hmm. Kathy, you were.
I was gonna ask something that I'm not gonna ask anymore, because I think I'm, I mean, I, I just wonder if there was maybe an easy way for us to do some sort of quick survey of residents, of where they lean on this at all, just like, to help us know if we, you know.
The next, the next big election is, what, fourteen months away? The next big turnout election, you know, the, the presidential election. So, you know, that's, that becomes a question, do we need to act? If, if we decide that the referendum path is the way to go, do we need to act before then? Do we feel any urgency to act before then? But, like I said, I, it seems like two weeks is quick for us to actually make a decision, other than saying, we'll make the decision later.
Oh, don't forget, I mean, we, we need a decision that fourteen months from now, we need a decision before January first.
Well, well, right, on one of those.
On one of those three, right.
But one of the decisions can be, we'll decide later.
Yeah, oh, yeah, I mean, it's, it's whatever your cover.
No, what I'm, the moratorium ordinance is, is in essence, we'll decide, we'll decide later.
Right, but if, if the law is enacted January first, when do we need to make a decision? Is there some kind of thing that says we should have decided two months before or?
Well, no, it would have to be before January first.
Before January first, but is there any, does it matter when before January first?
It will not matter from a legal standpoint. If you were, wanted to allow it, it would help facilitate that and allow those companies to start looking at Womack as a viable option to, to be here. Other than that, there's no legal reason to do it except before January first.
So if you don't have it in there, then, if you don't have anything, then it's gonna be presumed allowed.
The municipalities that are in favor of doing it, like Northbrook, Evanston, um, they are enacting their ordinances now so that the putative licensees can get their applications in, get their, um, property arrangements squared away. As I, to Dan's point, the, it's even complicated in terms of if you're trying to lease property from somebody who has a loan through a federally insured institution, they won't lease to you.
Correct.
Uh, some of the, some of the dispensaries, they have to physically own the property, uh, before they'll be able to use it, own it free and clear before they can even use it. So they're passing their ordinances now so that the, um, licensees have, have the chance to apply.
Yeah, they know you're in play.
They, they want it and they wanna facilitate it.
When are those seventy-five gonna be issued? I mean, are they in right now for the states?
So the first, so the ones that have the medical dispensary licenses, I get the first crack at it. So those, whatever that number is, I'm not sure if it's thirty or, or fifty, they have first crack to.
Expand their offering.
To expand, exactly, to expand their offering and get a second location. Then the other twenty-five will be processed sometime between January first and, of twenty twenty into December thirty-first. Now, the issue.
But I would assume the state wants as many of those seventy-five sell on January first.
Yes, that's why you have the preliminary medical ones that have already kind of passed the background checks because they're already operating in the field.
Right, and they've got their site.
Yeah, they got their site, exactly, they got their supply, right? So, um, that's why they get the first crack at it to, to do that. Now, that won't fill up the seventy-five. Interesting enough, as of, as of last week, the state departments that are involved in this have not come out with rules on this. Again, those rules are not gonna be anything that's shocking or different than medical cannabis. I mean, they seem to work for them, so all this is just offering a bigger, you know, a difference, different type of supply to a larger group of people.
But meanwhile, regardless of how we decide, whether we decide to sell or not allow the sale of it here, there are other changes to the code that need to be made before January first.
Absolutely, so those are, those will be on for next, next meeting for sure.
But I've got a question about that. If the communication around this, people aren't gonna understand that we're voting on some miscellaneous stuff related to cannabis. They're gonna think we're voting on cannabis. And so I'm, I'm a little concerned that without any sort of communication, that we're gonna create, we're gonna create a controversy that we're not creating.
Oh, oh, I don't, I don't think two weeks is reasonable, but, but I, but I do think that sometime before January first.
Yeah, no, but I'm saying, but even the, even the quote non-controversial stuff that Jeff's talking about putting on the, on the agenda in two weeks may create a controversy we're not trying to create here.
Right, so.
Why don't we just do the, refer to the judiciary committee? Why don't we just do the first one? I mean, we don't, why don't we at next village board meeting just refer to the judiciary?
A referral, people can understand.
Right, people can understand, and then the others, we can wait a little bit on.
You can, so the, the second, the two and three don't require a public hearing. So those can be introduced and, and frankly, even introduced and, and waive and just do it at that meeting. The first one, as well as the other decisions of whether or not, let's say you wanna permit it or not permit it, but you wanted to say we've done it.
Public hearing.
You have to have a public hearing because it's a zoning code change.
A public hearing, not a public meeting.
Not a public meeting, a public hearing and that's a thirty to fifteen day window.
Right.
Prior to actually having the hearing. So there is somewhat of a.
So there's a clock, so you need to tell us, you need to give us better sense on what the, it's really, frankly, answer sent a question, like when do we have to do it? There is a clock.
Though, I, to, again, to your point and trustee Daz's point, the referral to the judiciary committee can be simply, at this point, for getting the definition squared away and updated in the zoning ordinance that we need done. If the board can take as long to study this as you want to, all it takes is a moratorium ordinance, you can dissolve the moratorium anytime you want, in twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one.
So I feel like, yeah, and I feel like we should be taking one, one meeting, the quote non-controversial stuff, and then whether we're going moratorium or whatever we're doing, So, I feel like, yeah, and I, I feel like we should be taking one, one meeting, the quote non-controversial stuff, and then whether we're going moratorium or whatever we're doing, this should be one meeting, not prolonging the pain with having five meetings that have cannabis on the agenda, and therefore, we've created controversy at five, five meetings, as opposed to sort of resolving everything at one shot.
And, and should this, should this appear in the communicator and, in, in a much broader sense?
News and things like that, I think, yeah.
Bob, I, I do agree with you that if, that if there's some, even if it's just a technical little change, folks are gonna be thinking that, you know, we're doing it.
We're voting on, we're voting on cannabis.
Right, exactly.
One way or the other, and we're not, so.
I think that's fair.
We have one minute.
Yes, I'm, I.
We're done.
Well, I have, because I have to take public comments, so.
All right, I believe the staff has adequate direction on, uh, this.
I actually have to, eleven fifty-three, all right. Um, so, Trustee Plunkett, that's it, right?
Yes.
Okay, there's no reports from our special committees. Um, item seven, there's no additional new business discussed. Item eight, no actions to take with regard to pending matters, pending matters referred to standing committees. I'll now return to item two on the agenda, public comment. Uh, are there any individuals who would like to address the board on an item that was not on the agenda tonight? Seeing none, we'll move on to item nine, which is adjournment, may I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye. Aye, are there any opposed? We stand adjourned.